I want to recognize the individual senators that are in session hall right now. At this point in time, it's Speaker Juan Pat and Senator Tom Ada. As we await for some of the other senators to join us, we'll take a 15-minute recess. Thank you.
I got a call from someone in an agency that said I was going to be here.
Yes. We're getting things today.
I'm checking that.
Yeah.
Something about...
We have some different coming from that. And some may be decision-making. Usually one is going to happen more, but they're only going to be there two hours or three.
She's wondering what she wants.
They do have island cat, you know?
I do. I've already used for the last four, five Fridays, I've used the island cat.
You see how nice these shirt looks? There is an island shirt and then it's not...
And then it's got that taken apart.
Why can't you be wearing, wear them as a...
Let me, let me, because like this, and I'm on top, and then I'll go back and...
Oh, my gosh. But the cats don't go into the bin.
This is island, this is an island bird.
Explain whether an island bird like that here in Guam, come on, you're my book, yes?
This is an island bird.
Don't worry, don't worry. Haven't convinced me of that.
The committee of the hall is now back in session. We are on page 28, section 5. The title of that particular section is enactment of the Guam Solid Waste Management System Lease Financing Act. Article 9, subsection 51901. Any questions or comments? Not, subsection 51902. Moving on to page 29, which is inclusive of the last section that I highlighted. Primarily the definitions. Page 30. Senator Rector, you're recognized. Page 30.
On page 30. I move to amend L on line 13 to insert the same language that we put in the previous definition for system, which I am feverishly looking for. Here we go. To insert the following language, notwithstanding this or any other provisional law, the authorization to enter a privatization partnership or contract by DPW for the operation of the system shall require a cost-benefit analysis, economic impact study, and legislative approval.
On the proposed amendment to incorporate, Senator Rector, if I can ask you to give a copy of that to the Sergeant at Arms so he can run copies and circulate it. I understand that it was previously entertained, but most of us have already set our papers aside. Senator Tenorio, on the proposed amendment on page 30.
Thank you. I've already previously objected to the similar language previously and would like to be consistent and incorporate by reference the previous objection and therefore do not support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. On the amendment proffered by Senator Rector, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just want to stand and rise in support or support the amendment as proffered by the good senator from Cuyahoga Baragada. And again, as we look at continuity and making reference to what we debated on several days ago at a very lengthy timeframe and to just spare everyone else the reiteration of what has happened in the last couple of days, I just want to say that this just, again, further identifies what was noted in the definition of what system meant. So, again, based on that, I want to support my colleague from Cuyahoga Baragada and keep its continuity in that, in him proffering that amendment. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Munia Barnes. On the amendment proffered by Senator Rector, any further comments? Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized on the amendment.
Maybe just as a matter of procedure, Mr. Chairman, but why would you want to have two different definitions in the same legislation? So, I'm not sure that we... I mean, it would seem that when this definition was made in the earlier part of the document, that that should carry through since there was never any intent to come up with a different meaning.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Did you want to pose that question to someone in the room?
Maybe counsel really needs to advise on whether the earlier amendment that was made carries through to the definition of the same term in the second part of the document.
I think, Senator Ada, you bring up a very legitimate concern, but if you look at the enactment of this, it would create and fall under an Article 9 component, and obviously it has the respective subsections. So, I don't know if the previous definitions, which was identified under a different article...
Mr. Chair, can I just move for a one-minute recess so we can at least check the technicality with counsel on that? Just to make sure? Can I...
One minute recess.
No, I think what, okay, what needs to happen here is that to make it consistent is that Matt, you can't just use the notwithstanding only, you need to take the whole system again, the same thing again. Because it's not our system, Matt, it's our system. So, I think that's...
But I understand, but they're not... You know what they're doing? They are paying prior to um, gate units, but it's only with your... That's it. That's all they do. But I really wish it was the... Because so long they were saying they were... That's what they wanted to do, was that they... To come back, well, by your... Of course. What I'm actually doing here...
So, where are we?
I'm thinking for the next...
Is she going to accept that? Or do you care?
Do you see something? Want to see something? Necklaces? Made out of a leath? This one is a... I'm trying to open my own business. My nephew. This is one for you because that is 90 and 75.
How much is selling those for?
Under 100. It's under 40.
Holy cow. Already my neck hurts just thinking about it. These guys can, these guys with broad shoulders, they just can't locate it. And all these muscles. All these muscle men.
Lathy stone.
It's old.
Oh, shoot, I forgot my mirror.
Holy cow, that is too heavy. Put it over your head.
Come, Lego show. Lego show.
So, that's what you want. Wait, 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 you got to take the plastic back with you because that gives you the price. How much is that one?
I saw one like this.
140. This guy can afford it. Or that's why you wanted to go to the bank to get your money now.
That's the leath. Oh, that's the fish hook.
The fish hook.
The fish hook. And then here's the lathy stone. This one's nice the way because it's not like around.
Is that for you or for somebody special? They put it on now. This is your island, island wear.
Actually, I bought it for Senator Rector because he was admiring my sanai on Monday. And I was talking, I said, "My nephew makes, not the sanai, but he does with other kinds of stones." Like this is the leath. And then he goes to the beach and he picks up the corn, those corn shells. It looks, it looks like a workflow.
Let me do it for you.
This is good for you, Senator?
Got one from my ear?
For you, I can, I can go ahead and request for that. He does special orders if you have a design. Oh, my goodness, we're on camera.
Very nice, very nice.
There you go.
I love that one you write, that's the best one. It's like an actual show from a stuff like the mother.
Yeah, the way it's with the shine. That's why, that's why it's more expensive because it took longer to do. Thank you, sir. Would you like a bracelet, too? No, he can do special orders, too, if you want, if you have a designer or what. I don't have one with me, but you know, if you have a designer or what? Because he's supposed to be making me earrings. Earrings, no?
Nice necklace. Thanks, sir.
Senator Rector's not here yet. Thank you, Senator, and enjoy. If you're probably letting me know.
On two hands? I have many two hands, Francis. Bragging again now. Bragging again. These two hands, huh? Oh, really?
The star comes over.
Yeah. Only I thought...
So, yesterday...
She was gonna say her hair got a bit chirped.
But she was...
The star comes over.
Yeah. The way it's with the shine. That's why, that's why it's more expensive because it took longer to do. Thank you, sir. Would you like a bracelet, too? No, he can do special orders, too, if you want, if you have a designer or what. I don't have one with me, but you know, if you have a designer or what? Because he's supposed to be making me earrings. Earrings, no?
Nice necklace. Thanks, sir.
Senator Rector's not here yet. Thank you, Senator, and enjoy. If you're probably letting me know.
On two hands? Bragging again now. Bragging again. Give these two hands, huh? Oh, really?
The star comes over.
Yeah.
I'm proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
On two hands? I have many two hands, Francis. Bragging again now. Bragging again. Give these two hands, huh? Oh, really?
The star comes over.
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 What's she doing, say, GIA? In March, I, March I, I...
Just grateful you're here.
Reverend, with the offer.
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 Good afternoon, senators. The committee of the hall is now back in session. We are on page 28, section 5. The title of that particular section is enactment of the Guam Solid Waste Management System Lease Financing Act. Article 9, subsection 51901. Any questions or comments? Not, subsection 51902. Moving on to page 29, which is inclusive of the last section that I highlighted. Primarily the definitions. Page 30. Senator Rector, you're recognized. Page 30.
On page 30. I move to amend L on line 13 to insert the same language that we put in the previous definition for system, which I am feverishly looking for. Here we go. "To insert the following language, notwithstanding this or any other provisional law, the authorization to enter a privatization partnership or contract by DPW for the operation of the system shall require a cost-benefit analysis, economic impact study, and legislative approval."
On the proposed amendment to incorporate, Senator Rector, if I can ask you to give a copy of that to the Sergeant at Arms so he can run copies and circulate it? I understand that it was previously entertained, but most of us have already set our papers aside. Senator Tenorio, on the proposed amendment on page 30.
Thank you. I've already previously objected to the similar language previously and would like to be consistent and incorporate by reference the previous objection and therefore do not support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. On the amendment proffered by Senator Rector, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just want to stand and rise in support or support the amendment as proffered by the good senator from Cuyahoga Baragada. And I, again, as we look at continuity and making reference to what we debated on several days ago at a very lengthy timeframe and to just spare everyone else the reiteration of what has happened in the last couple of days, I just want to say that this just, again, further identifies what was noted in the definition of what system meant. So, again, based on that, I want to support my colleague from Cuyahoga Baragada and keep its continuity in that, in that, him proffering that amendment. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Munia Barnes. On the amendment proffered by Senator Rector. Any further comments? Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized on the amendment.
Maybe just as a matter of procedure, Mr. Chairman, but why would you want to have two different definitions in the same legislation? So, I'm not sure that we... I mean, it would seem that when this, this definition was made in the earlier part of the document, that that should carry through since there was never any intent to come up with a different meaning.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Did you want to pose that question to someone in the room?
Maybe, maybe counsel really needs to advise on whether the earlier amendment that was made carries through to, to the definition of the same term in the second part of the document.
I think, Senator Ada, you bring up a very legitimate concern, but if you look at the enactment of this, it would create and fall under an Article 9 component, and obviously it has the respective subsections. So, I don't know if the previous definitions, which was identified under a different article...
Mr. Chair, can I just move for a one-minute recess so we can at least check the technicality with counsel on that, just to make sure? Can I... Can it just...
One minute recess.
No, I think what, okay, what needs to happen here is that to make it consistent is that Matt, you can't just use the notwithstanding only, you need to take the whole system again, the same thing again. Because it's not our system, Matt, it's our system. So, I think that we only put there this again.
So, just take this whole paragraph that's the price and replace it and take off the note. Right?
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah.
If you don't mind me, because like it was, it was the first time...
Were you wearing that this morning? No?
I just wanted to watch it. I had to buy me something, I was depressed. For me, if I'm not you.
Well, you know, I think it's just that, you know, it wasn't ridiculous. Um, I have a damn, I see it, I sit by my shivers and I think it's hard to hurt. That's why I hardly wear necklaces.
I'm sure, I'm sure that wasn't what hurts your neck that time you went to Bali.
Inquiring minds want to know what happened in Bali.
What happens in Bali stays in Bali.
Yes, it's open. I want to be there when it's open. He wants to be there when it's open.
Good afternoon, senators. The committee of the hall is now back in session. Senator Tom Ada, you have the floor. Based on, based on the advice of legal counsel, her suggestion is that it be retained in this and it could be incorporated into Article 9 because they're dealing with two separate articles. And the previous definition may not necessarily carry over into this article. So, that was the legal counsel's suggestion.
Okay, then, I was making, I was making an inquiry. So, my inquiry has been answered. I'll leave it to the mover then to take the necessary action.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada.
Mr. Chair, can he just reiterate the amendment for the record so we're clear of what exactly it states?
For the members of the body, the amendment is proffered by Senator Rector on page 30 to add to, shortly after the word collections on line 21, which is the definition for system, the same provision that was applied to the definition of system in Article 8. And which shall read, "Notwithstanding this or any other provision of law, the authorization to enter into a privatization partnership or contract by DPW for the operation of the system shall require a cost-benefit analysis, economic impact study, and legislative approval." On the proposed amendment, Speaker Juan Pat, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just think we, what we need to do is on the amendment itself is that we need to make a correction so that the clerks will be able to have it, is that instead of 51804, page 8, that it should be 51902, page 30.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. In this particular case, yes, the phrase was the one that was highlighted, not necessarily the document that was circulated, but you're correct. On the amendment, there's been an objection. Senator Rector, would you like to close on your amendment?
Well, this is just being consistent in what this bodies already decided, that we have to make sure that we have the best information so that we can make the best decisions for the people of Guam. And requiring that any kind of privatization or outsourcing or leaseback agreement requires a cost-benefit analysis, an economic impact study, and legislative approval. We owe that much transparency to the people of Guam, and we owe them that we have the best information available to make the best decision available for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On the proposed amendment, there's been an expression of an objection, so all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Amendment passes. Senator Rector, please ensure the clerk has a copy of your amendment. Moving on to page, we're still on page 30. Any further questions or comments? Page 31. On page 31, subsection 51903, authorization to enter into long-term leases. Any questions, comments, or amendments? Page 32. Subsection 51904, page 32, on procurement. Any questions, comments, or amendments? Page 33, subsection 51905, powers of department. Subsection 51906, assignments. Madam Speaker, Juan Pat, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I think that this, too, is very similar to what was previously had amended when we talk about, especially in line 6, about in addition to and in amplification of... with what we had done in page six, section five-one-eight-oh-three. I don't, you know how it is, because I didn't, I've only made, I think, because what we'd like to do is delete, again, the same words, "and" in amplification of.
Senators, we are in subsection five-one-nine-zero-five. Speaker Wampat, the amendment is to delete the words on line six, "and" in amplification of, which would be consistent with the previous amendment that was proffered in the previous article. On that amendment, Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that amendment was made earlier to strike all instances of this language, and it was moved prior. I mean, this doesn't, this is a redundant motion, but I have no objection to it, but the point is that that motion was made, as a matter of fact, by the gentleman from Baragada, to strike all instances of the similar language appearing in the same context. So, that motion was already made, but there's no foul here.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we can ask the clerk to make sure.
Yes, thank you, Senator Tenorio, and thank you, Speaker Wampat. Let me just seek the advice of clerk. Thirty-second recess.
I said, well, if I was getting three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in my, in the consultancy, I wouldn't think there was anything wrong in the world. And I said, if you looked at the market, it fell to four-thousand-six-hundred, you know, and there's five million people unemployed, but if you're making that.
And we're not even controlling that at all either.
Good. Good. Good afternoon, Senators. Committee of the House is now back in session. Speaker Wampat, in reference to Senator Tenorio's statement, I know that the clerk has, clerk personnel have stated that, in fact, they do recollect something similar to that, but for purposes of ensuring that we're consistent, your amendment is being recognized. Thank you, Senator Tenorio, for your statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, can I amend the amendment then, and just to make sure it's clear on the record for the clerk, that all similar language, we're going to be consistent, I have no problem with it, and the similar amendment was amended earlier, but I'll amend it now, that all language similarly appearing "and" in amplification of be stricken from all similar language in subsequent sections appearing hereafter.
On that amendment to the amendment by Senator Tenorio, no objections?
I don't have, I don't have an objection, Mr. Chairman, but it actually only appears in two places, page six and page thirty-three. So, and we're doing that right now.
Actually, in, on the previous article, Madam Speaker, there were two references. That's why Speaker Wampat, I mean, Speaker Panglinen had highlighted it. On the amendment to the amendment, no objections. So ordered. On the primary amendment by Speaker Wampat, any objections? No objections. So ordered. Speaker Wampat, if I can ask you to please ensure the clerk gets a copy of that amendment. Subsection five-one-nine-zero-six, assignments. Any questions, comments, or deliberations? Questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, Speaker Wampat, I mean, Speaker Panglinen, I'm sorry.
Once again, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just move to delete the words "and" in amplification of.
Speaker?
That was done. Okay. Well, what if I want to put it back?
I got your back covered, Ben.
Speaker Panglinen, Speaker Wampat, had your back. Any further questions or comments on subsection five-one-nine-zero-six, assignments, please? Subsection five-one-nine-zero-seven, use of tax exam financing. Question, comment, or amendment? No further questions, comments, or amendments on page thirty-three. Senators, page thirty-four, subsection five-one-nine-zero-eight, leaseback may be secured by revenue off the system. Any questions, comments, or amendments? Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I don't understand why it's a "may." In other words, I'm kind of confused because we definitely want the revenue stream of the system to support the operation and the borrowing of the system, and so I'm kind of confused of why, under a leaseback agreement, you would not use the revenue of the system and dedicate that with the affirmative "shall" rather than "may." What is the advantage of putting it under the permissive versus the requirement? So, I would, absent any other explanation, just move "may" to "shall" to ensure that we isolate the revenue of the system for the operation of the system and the payment of the, of the, any leaseback or any financing entered into for the purpose of executing a leaseback.
Thank you very much.
So, my amendment would be to change the word "may" in five-one-nine-oh-eight to "shall" on line, of course, one and two.
On Speaker Panglinen's amendment to change the words "may" on both lines, one and two, on page thirty-four.
No objections.
No objections. So ordered. Thank you, Speaker Panglinen. Any other questions or comments on subsection five-one-nine-zero-eight? If not, subsection five-one-nine-zero-nine, leaseback may be secured by section thirty revenue. Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
Yeah, my motion would be just to delete that entire section. As we've, even in a leaseback, I still think that, you know, we would use, or maybe just to, maybe not the entire section, but change general, section thirty to, compact it back. I really, you know, just for further discussion, I just, I'm just kind of concerned why, under a leaseback, I really think maybe just the solid, the system of the revenue, that's why I, my first initial gut reaction was just to delete the, to delete the entire section.
Mr. Chair, point of information.
Senators, please.
I just want to make sure I understand what has happened previously in terms of what Ollie and the people at Getca are supposed to do. When we initially took out or replaced section thirty with general obligation or general fund revenues, they basically said they would go back to bond counsel to try to perhaps incorporate language that would be more appropriate to the bond market or to anything else, and more appropriate now that it's general fund revenues as opposed to section thirty monies.
Correct.
I would propose that maybe we skip this area until we understand what they did or what proposals they may have and how they treated the handling of.
Actually, if I may, if I might, I may clarify just to.
Please, Mr. Chairman.
To respond to your point of information, Senators Pardon, the provision that bond counsel is in a process of finalizing and amending refers directly to the bond that will be floated, not to the leaseback arrangement. So, this is a separate component that is subject to legislative concurrence.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I have a little discomfort also, but thank you.
Yeah.
Speaker Panglinen, you start.
Yeah, I would just move to delete this section, and so in a leaseback arrangement, that it shall, we shall only enter into leaseback using tipping fees as a payment for the leaseback because there's no borrowing involved. It, well, the tipping fee is authorized in fifteen, in five-one-nine-oh-eight, all the revenues of the system, that is inclusive of the tipping fee, right, for the leaseback. So, I would say that in a leaseback arrangements, we would, we would only depend on the tipping fee, you know, on that, and that would be part of the negotiation between the contractor and the government of Guam.
On the proposed amendment by Speaker Panglinen, on subsection five-one-nine-zero-nine, page thirty-four, to delete the entire section. Any further discussion? Senators Pardon, on the amendment, please.
I understand, I understand where Senator Panglinen is coming from, but again, the question then begs that if the tipping fees do not cover the total amount of the operation, then what's the recourse? In other words, are we going to replace, I mean, how do we, how do we really move that forward? You know, this whole option? Because nobody would come back with a leaseback operation if, and perhaps rightfully so at this moment, the tipping fees do not cover the full expense of the operation, you know, the build-out, the operation, any money they may have to borrow. You know, and to me is like, until we, we provide some other mechanism to cover any shortfall that may occur, if the tipping fees do not meet the level of funding that needs to be had for a leaseback type of system, without some kind of fallback, then I would have to object at this point. And I do that respectfully, but.
Senators Pardon, you still have the floor.
Yes, I understand, and you know what? If there's any other speakers right now, I'll concede the floor with the reservation, maybe come back. I just need to think this through a little bit more.
Okay. On that note, any other speakers on the proposed amendment? Senator Rector, you're recognized.
Yeah, you, basically, just stay consistent with what we've done and the rest of it, even with the bond borrowing, we have to get rid of the section thirty revenue. If, and realistically, if we don't, I think it's going to endanger other financing options for us. It's kind of scary the way it's written, so I stand in support of the amendment. It has to be deleted, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I also support the deletion of that particular section because if you really read five-one-nine-oh-eight, that the payments will be secured by pledge often and lean upon all or any portion of the revenue of the system, and if you recall, once section thirty monies come to the government of Guam after their debt obligations are paid for, it goes immediately into, of course, our general fund, and it doesn't separate it in any way, so it is then available in terms of all monies that are available to pay back the leaseback. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. On the proposed amendment, Senators Pardon, you're recognized again.
I appreciate allowing me to come back and, you know, I understand, and I beg to disagree with the previous speaker, but, and I do that very respectfully, and it's more, actually, now I think I have, I understand a little bit better because if we read forward, and we're not even there yet, to the next section, five-one-nine-one-zero, I think that if we do delete this section, then the next section would cover that shortfall and would address the concern I had. So, I, if I did make a motion, I withdraw that motion. But I, then I, I, I actually, I actually would like to rescind my objection at this point.
Thank you very much, Senators. Well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the proposed amendment by Speaker Panglinen? Speaker Panglinen, you may close on your amendment. On the amendment to delete subsection five-one-nine-zero-nine, no objections. So ordered. Senators, on to page thirty-five, subsection five-one-nine-one-zero. Obviously, with technical corrections, that the sections be renumbered accordingly. Any questions or comments or amendments? Five-one-nine-one-zero. Payment of leaseback obligations from sources other than revenue.
See now, that's what I said, Jimmy?
Questions, comments, or amendments? Two-minute recess.
Judy? Judy? I thought we had a full-on resolution. Why do we have to do a separate confirmation? I don't think about a resolution. I've been working on such a thing for a week.
Committee of the House is now back in session. Subsection five-one-nine-one-zero. Any questions, comments, or deliberations? Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm reading this, and this, this, to me, is a little bit more, even more expansive than the section thirty. This says that all or any part of any funds other than the revenue or the proceeds, so it could go into the special funds, it can go into all these other funds, and so I'm, this, this, to me, is even worse than the section I just deleted, and so I'm going to move to delete this section also.
Thank you, Speaker Panglinen. On the motion to delete subsection five-one-nine-one-zero, page thirty-five. Any further comments? Senator Rector, you're recognized, and then Senator Blas. Senator Rector.
I couldn't agree more. This is, basically, they can tap into any type of money that the government has anywhere. I mean, and now, the interesting thing is, it says the government may use any and all funds other than revenue and proceeds, proceedings from property owned. I mean, unless I'm mistaken, that means they can actually go into autonomous agencies' bank accounts. And that, that seems incredibly worrying to me. I mean, I don't mind finding other revenue sources, well, actually, I do mind finding other revenue sources. It should be financed by the tipping fees if you're going to do a leaseback agreement, which I'm not all that keen on anyway, but being able to tap into any of our accounts willy-nilly and with, with no oversight is literally crazy. We have responsibility to the people of Guam not to allow this. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Senator Frank Blas, Jr., you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, is there any representatives from the administration that will be able to explain?
They were instructed and invited. I understand that they're on their way down, so that was provided, that information was provided ourselves seven minutes ago.
I think that my decision on whether or not to, to object or not to object to this is going to be contingent on some explanation by the administration, by the authors of this, of this legislation to explain, explain this a little bit more and the reason and the need for this. So, that's, that's what I ask for, Mr. Chair.
One-minute recess.
by the authors of this, of this legislation to explain, uh, explain this a little bit more, and the reason, and the need for this. So, that's, that's what I ask for, Mr. Chair.
One-minute recess.
Do we have a white smoke yet? Is there a poke? Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample. Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample.
The Committee of the House is now back in session. Uh, just for the information of the body, about eight minutes ago, we did receive a note that in fact the representatives from the administration was going to be joining us shortly. Uh, I don't know how long it takes a drive between Adalup and Legislative Building, but in that regard, uh, we will recess for fifteen minutes and allow them the opportunity to be able to join us. Yes, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
You know, Mr. Chair, I, I can proffer two things. One, and this is again, the, you know, the chair has the authority to do this, we can go to other sections and come back to this, or dispense of this, despite, I mean, you know, I mean, I had a discussion with my, my, my good colleague from Baragota, I, I, I agree with, but the thing is, I, again, I want to be cer- certain about certain things here, okay?
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Blas. On that note, we're going to proceed and come back to Speaker Panglinen's amendment on page thirty-five. Moving on to subsection 51911, pledged by the government of Guam. Any questions, comments, or amendments, please? If not, moving on to subsection 51912. Responsibility for construction, operation, and maintenance of the solid waste facility. Questions, comments, or amendments? Senators, moving on to subsection 51913, credit enhancement. Speaker Panglinen, on page thirty-six, Senators, subsection 51913. Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, um, on page thirty-six, as it continues to thirty-seven, uh, the way I understand this is that, um, the, um, the governor of Guam may enter into agreements, of course, on behalf of the departments, uh, as it de- excuse me, um, as it determines is necessary, desirable, to improve the security and marketability of the leaseback, uh, uh, obligations. Um, the problem that is that we're telling him to, that he can do that, and I want to be absolutely certain that we don't end up into another consent decree, uh, or even litigation, in which the governor may do things that allow him to improve the security, but it requires action by the legislature, uh, and therefore, he enters in something else that requires funding, uh, and signs the paper, and then we're back into this debate of, are we a party to the suit or not a party to the suit? And so, it's very clear that the way to allow him to do that and not get into that debate is, I would like to make an amendment, and that would be, uh, at the end of the line on, on two, at the period, change that to a comma, and say, uh, "which does not require the legislator to fund such contract or agreement enhancements." Uh, or, yeah, which, which, uh, in, contract, yeah, that, basically, on, on, on line two, as it says, um...
Speaker Panglinen, can I request your amendment in writing, please?
Yes, it's right here.
Okay. Sergeant Adams, can we get copies of that distributed to the senators? One-minute recess.
Good afternoon, senators. The Committee of the House is now back in session. Speaker Panglinen, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, my amendment is, um, after the word obligation, some page thirty-seven, line two, remove the period there, add a comma, and the line would finish by reading, "which does not require the legislature to appropriate funds for the implementation of such contracts or agreements." In other words, this section allows the governor to enhe- to enhance agreements and contracts to ensure the marketability and enhance the marketability and ensure it, uh, and, uh, security of the leaseback arrangements. But I want to make sure that any such agreements do not require the legislator to fund these market, uh, uh, these contracts that may, that, uh, ensure the, improve the security and the marketability, uh, you know? If, if there's going to be any mon- money expend, expended, it really needs to have the authorization of the legislature. And so, this would, uh, allow the governor to, you know, if it's another improved, uh, extended for a term of an extra year, maybe okay, but it can't be extended for an extra year, and there's additional lease payments, and the legislature has to appropriate lease payments. He can't do those kind of things. So, so, um, again, this makes sure that the gov- that whatever the governor does, uh, is, is within the executive branch power and not, uh, infringes on the legislative power of obligating funds when they have not been, uh, appropriated by the legislature.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. On page thirty-seven, after line two, the word obligation, insert a comma, to read "as such, which does not require the legislature to appropriate funds for the implant- implementation of such contracts or agreements." On Speaker Panglinen's amendment. Any discussion? No objections? Discussion? Senator Espada, you're recognized. On the amendment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I, if, if you just yield to a question, Senator?
Sure, Speaker Panglinen, please.
Yes, I'll yield to a question.
I mean, I'm not really sure what the question is. I'm trying to frame it in my own mind right now. But again, the ease, that the, the unease I have is, again, we're, we're saying that go ahead and do it, but not with any thing that...
That condition, let's say, where the, the agreement you enter into is conditioned on the legislature appropriating funds to fund its implementation. See, if you start, if you start, uh, se- reading it from the first, uh, line of the section, Imagallahingwahan, he is hereby authorized to enter into such contracts or agreements on behalf of the department with such banks, insurance companies, or other financial institution as it determines necessary or desirable to improve the security and marketability of the leaseback options. So, it's the agreements that, it's the agreements that improve the, uh, insurability, the security and the marketability, uh, and he can do those things, but he can't do "which does not require legislative, uh, the legislature to fund such contract, uh, or agreement," maybe they, which, maybe I'm, maybe it's a little bit incomplete, uh, and maybe that's where your sentence is comfort, and I can see where that might be. Uh, the improvement, it's the improved, um, it's that...
Mr. Chair, may I, may we call for at least a very, very brief recess to, to discuss the, i- it's, it is a, a, a statutory construction issue at this point in time, and if we, if we do not write this properly, it will not convey the intent of what the author of this amendment is...
All right, senators, two-minute recess.
Thank you.
Do we have a white smoke yet? Is there a poke? Do we have a poke yet? We're waiting for a smoke sample.
Let's see if I'm a gunther, I think. Yeah. Huh? I don't know. What? What employee?
They're not the one that's on the other page. The one white's definitely insured, they said. So, what are they short? I said they were...
She passed down there, all those double one points. I sometimes think these crises are staged, man. Staged, yeah. Yeah, if it's bad this time, without the one million dollars a week, imagine, staged.
the, it is a statutory construction issue at this point in time, and if we, if we do not write this properly, it will not convey the intent of what the author of this amendment is...
All right, Senators, two-minute recess.
Thank you.
Do we put that in the special recess, guys? The government is short one point two million dollars, that's why they're all up there, and that's why they're not going out.
What are you talking about? Where, where?
The reason why, the reason why they're both up there is because it's other departments and agencies, because they're short one point two million dollars.
Why would they put out all the checks?
That's why George, all those guys are calling up there right now, not there right here.
Why are they short, well, they're, they're the law clients.
That's what the next call we got here. They're not cash. One point two million dollars are short right now, we have to get March first.
Yes, predicted. It's a cash thing.
Yes, they called back, seven thirty, Thursday, this was seventy dollars off, but actually just five dollars. The governor's office, so, and that's why she ordered her, and so they said, have a joy, bye-bye. That's what she was told.
Oh, that was, that was the, why are we talking about?
Computer, let's...
Yeah, all the time, because like the last time, they, they lost, they were freaking out, they texted, they lost all the checks. That's, that's where I had a big...
For her, she said, any kind of machine where they pay out over the machines, they're sure.
Do we have a white smoke yet? Is there a poke? You have a poke yet? Let's see if I'm a gunther, I think. Yeah. Huh? I don't know. What? What employee?
They said the, the one quarter manager not getting paid for it.
They're not, they're not, they're not, they're one week, they're insured, they said. So, what are they short? I said they were...
Down there, all those double one quarters, yeah. I sometimes think these crises are staged, man. Staged, yeah. Yeah, if it's bad this time without the one million dollars a week, imagine staged. Speaker Panglinen, on your amendment, please.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not sure if the amendment is appropriate for you there.
I know, I know, but I'm saying, you know, the, the, I don't want to know.
No, it's, I think you...
Well, yeah, I, 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 I need to bring them in, and they need to answer some of the questions on the record. Under, I don't know.
They want to show it to stop now. They want it to be like the one two million a week. They don't want it to be like... They're behind the legislature. They owe us two million from our law clients.
You came up with a solution.
You're writing a check?
I have a solution. We have to reattach the twenty million. Ben, 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 get a camera. Ben, Panglinen. Come on, I wasn't talking about you. I wasn't talking about you.
Ben, where are you talking about? Six o'clock in the morning.
It could be me. We, we, you wake me up from a, you wake me up from a sound sleep? Of course I say stuff. I'm in a bad mood. I didn't blame it on anybody. I didn't even say majority or minority.
I'll talk about it. I'll, I'll say your family name on the air next time.
I guess, I guess, you, 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 you,[1282.12] Stephanie, I have to be the one to tell her that you can sign something. Does it indicate that if the committee should sign that you are going to take this one to the committee and you sign that's in the meeting?
Committee of the House is now back in session. Speaker Panglinen, on your amendment, please.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Senator Spodan, you had the floor. On Speaker Panglinen's amendment, yes.
Oh, thank you. I thank you for that time to work on the language, and I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Senator Spodan. I believe the amendment has been modified to reflect--
That's correct. Mr. Chair, I'd just like to withdraw the earlier amendment in lieu of the one I'm about to present. They're of the same subject matter but written quite differently and would be--
So no objections, so ordered. Speaker Panglinen, you stay at the floor.
Yes. Yeah. So I'd like to present this one now, and it's--it would add, again, after obligations, on page thirty-seven, line two. Yeah. I withdrew this one.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Oh, yeah, and I'm introducing that typewritten one. I'm making sure that the clerk is able to follow me.
It's in excess of three words.
Thank you.
Speaker Panglinen--
And so it would be--the amendment now would read, "Provided that after the word 'obligations,' will be a semicolon, and then 'provided that set contracts or agreements to improve the security and marketability of the lease-back obligations shall not obligate, appropriate, or otherwise provide additional funding for the improvement to the security or marketability without legislative approval." And if I could just give a real quick example of what this would--how this would operate. For example, if the lease-back arrangement had a liability limit of--that the governor indemnified the operator of the--or the lessee to a million dollars, and the governor's able to--and that premium on insurance premium decided to fund that for an insurance premium. An insurance premium is a hundred thousand. So he gets that hundred thousand within the revenues of the system, buys the insurance, and the liability's a million. Let's say that all the other people who are wanting to lease-back said, "You know, if it was the liability limit was two million, it would be really attractive and improve our desire to participate. So can you increase the indemnification to two million?" So the governor then goes out, but the insurance premium on that is no longer a hundred thousand, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, but he can't find it in the system fund, and he has to take it from the general fund or some other place, and there's no appropriation for it. So in order to improve that to the one million, he needs fifty thousand, and so he would have to come back to the legislature and say, "I need--to make it more attractive and viable, I want to enter into--I have a million dollars already, and I can fund that. If I put it at two million, I can get five people bidding, but I need fifty thousand dollars to guarantee that that can be--to buy the insurance for that." And it would be that fifty thousand that would have to come back for funding by the legislature.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. On the amendment by Speaker Panglinen, any further discussion? If not, no objections, so ordered. Moving on to subsection five-one-nine-one-four, no personal liability, any discussion or amendments? Subsection five-one-nine-one-five, rules, regulations, and restrictions. Speaker Panglinen, on page thirty-seven, subsection five-one-nine-one-five, you recognize.
Once again, you know, rules and regulations set out the rules of engagement, as you like to say, Mr. Speaker. So we all know where we're going, what our limits and our boundaries are, and I don't understand why we would not want the department to promulgate rules for the implementation of this article. I just don't understand why we wouldn't want him to want that to be done. Maybe it's just a timeframe or something of the thing, and forty-five days, come down to the legislature or whatever. I'm not sure what the thinking was there. So maybe an expedited, you know, timeframe for the adoption of rules and regs, or is the body satisfied that everything to implement this is now in place and can move forward? But I would think maybe we need something a little bit more substantive and specific, and just to say, "If you want to be specific, you can be more specific," or if you want to be, you know, by saying you may promulgate rules. So I don't know, or tie it to something that's out there now for implementation of this project in this manner that has some specific rules of engagement, as you might want to say. So I'm not sure if I want to change that to shall, because I'm not sure of the full impact on it, but I do feel a little uncomfortable by not having something more specific for the implementation of this. Maybe, you know, I don't recall if everything is according to procurement law, et cetera, et cetera, and maybe that--maybe those are enough rather than rules and regs specifically for lease-back, that they be done pursuant to procurement law or pursuant to other laws in the books already on lease-back process. I know we do have some legislation, I think, on lease-back, and maybe we should tie it to that or something. That's my thing, and maybe somebody else might want to comment while I think further, you know, but I do have some major concerns in just having this all go out just under this without any more specificity.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. On subsection five-one-nine-one-five, any further discussion? On this particular section, Speaker Panglinen, unless you have any additional comments.
Can we allow us to come back after, maybe--
Absolutely.
Since we haven't finished the bill, but as we think about it further, maybe allowed to revisit?
Sure.
No objection.
Can I just add--
Yes, Senator Carvalho.
You know, there's some valid points the center's making. You know, this is--if there's one option that has already been--and you could--whether you can call it successful or not, it's ongoing, it's occurring. We have schools being built and have been completed. It would be nice to have the folks that were involved in the lease-back with the schools here to answer a comment of these very, very valid questions. I'm--again, I'm at ease here, and again, will we have their participation?
As a matter of fact, Senator Carvalho, that request obviously was extended shortly after we concluded for lunch. We did contact them shortly after two o'clock when we had initiated our session here, and I was instructed that they were going to be on their way down momentarily. This is like forty-five minutes later.
They must be going below the speed limit.
I understand that there's perhaps a financial matter that the acting governor, as well as the front office, are dealing with at the moment, which requires their attention. But Speaker Ben has asked--Senator Carvalho, Speaker Ben has asked that, in fact, we come back to this section, should it be necessary, so I will entertain that at that time. Moving to page thirty-eight, subsection five-one-nine-one-six, construction of article, any discussion or amendments? Moving on, subsection five-one-nine-one-seven, that should be renumbered accordingly. Obviously, that's a verability clause. Yes, Senator Gutters? Okay, moving on to section six, approval of lease and lease-back. Senator Gutters, you're recognized. Sure.
Did we already amend section six?
No, this is the first time that we are discussing it in Committee of the House.
Well, I have a different amendment, not for section six, but a new amendment to add at the end, but I'm concerned about section six, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I think we have to change the language a little bit, because this says, "The legislature hereby approves the execution and delivery of the lease and lease-back by the government pursuant to Article nine, Chapter fifty-one, Title ten." I don't know if we're approving something. I think it should be, "The legislature shall retain the authority to approve the execution and delivery of the lease and lease-back by the government pursuant to Article nine, Chapter fifty-one, Title ten." So I want to make that motion, please. The motion is, "The legislature, el legislatura en Guahon, shall retain the authority to approve the execution and delivery of the lease and lease-back by the government pursuant to Article nine, Chapter fifty-one, Title ten."
On the amendment on section six by Senator Gutters, page thirty-eight. Senator Tenoy--or Senator Gutters, did you want to discuss it any further?
We can discuss it, no objection.
Okay. Senator Tenoy, you're recognized. On the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is, I guess, similar to the amendment that my neighbor to my left here has with regards to the lease-back. In this section, you know, I thought, Mr. Chairman, we're here for this purpose. I mean, isn't that what we decided? We have the power, that's clear. The authority of the legislature to authorize this, we already have. So I don't know, saying that we need to have the authority is redundant. We're here, we have the authority, and that's what we're here to decide. So either we're going to take a course of action that I thought that was the reason we're here for, to determine whether we're going to lease it or not. We're going to do lease-back or we're not going to do lease-back. We're going to do a bond or not a bond? Doing any combination of those things? That's what we're here for. If we're here to decide whether we're going to do lease-back, let's decide if we're going to do a lease-back or decide we're not. I think that's kind of the policy position we should be talking about here, and if we're going to commit to that course of action, then let's get eight votes and decide it's going to stay. If you don't want it to stay, then get your eight votes and remove the section. Because as far as I'm concerned, we have the authority to determine what the lease is going to be, if we want to set those conditions and parameters. But if we see a train wreck and we're on the hill, and we know that this train's going to hit the wall, and there's going to be a catastrophe, are we going to allow it to happen, or are we going to do something to intervene? If we know that we have the abilities to lease this back, and it's financially--we're going to set all the parameters and the conditions, let's do that. If we're not, then don't. So I really don't know why we continue to say we need to come back to the legislature to get approval. That's why we're here, folks. We're here to decide if we're going to do a lease-back or not. You want to set up the conditions and parameters? Fine. But we don't need to say that we have the authority, because we already know that. So let's either decide a course of action to allow the government to do it or not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenoy. On Senator Gutters' amendment, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman--
Yes.
I want to withdraw my amendment, because I forgot to realize that Senator Rector has a similar amendment. I want to defer to him, but just one comment, if I may.
Yes, Senator.
I'm not willing to hand everything over, all powers unchecked, to the administration to enter into a lease or lease-back arrangement. I think there has to be some protections for the people of Guam in this process, and that's what motivated my concern with reference to this section. But I want to defer to Senator Rector, because he has a different amendment, which I will support.
Thank you very much, Senator Gutters. On the section six, approval of lease and lease-back, Senator Rector, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to make the following amendment. At the beginning of section six, insert the language "official action approval by..." Yes, it is. You should all have a copy of it on your desk.
Senator Rector, you may proceed.
Or it says, "official action and approval by the legislature." I'll butcher that if I try and say it. My tongue doesn't work that well. "is required for," and then delete the words "hereby approves."
On the amendment by Senator Rector, Senator Rector, would you like to discuss your amendment further?
Yeah, I--you know, as we're going through this and we're talking about lease-back options, that's--I understand, this legislation actually approves the concept of a lease-back, but not the specific details. As we looked at a lot of these proposals, like Gita got nine different proposals, and from what I've seen so far from the different companies, all of them are incredibly unique and have this technology that seems to do all sorts of different things. And so the concept of a lease-back is one thing, but as we all know, the devil's in the details, and I want to make sure that we don't give a blanket approval, which I think this original language said, so that the governor can sign a $202 million lease-back deal without us seeing what that deal actually consists of. And I want to make sure this legislature doesn't give up its oversight authority on such an expensive and complicated issue. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On Senator Rector's amendment, to incorporate the words "official action and approval by," and then subsequent to that, "after elisatun guahan is required for," and the deletion of the words "hereby approved." Senator Ada, you're recognized. On the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I think up to this point, we have been laying the groundwork for the lease-lease-back arrangement, and we've put in there, I guess, a lot of safeguards and whatnot, and now section six brings us to that, I guess, to that climax that says, "Okay, we approve of the lease and lease-back." I don't think that we are just handing it over to the administration to do so as they please, because there in the next sentence indicates that the terms and the conditions of the lease and the lease-back shall have been approved by the Guam Utilities, by the PUC. The PUC is a body that the legislature created for that very purpose, to review these agreements, to see how it's going to impact on rates, to see if, in fact, it's a fair arrangement to get into. So we're--you know, the language is already here. To leave it to that body that was created by this legislature to provide that check and balance, and we've got to exercise some faith, good faith and confidence in that body. Otherwise, if they're, in fact, not doing their work, then we should just abolish them. Those members did, in fact, come through the legislature at one point or another and were confirmed by this legislature, indicating, I guess, our confidence that these people can look out for the interest of the consumers of Guam. So I don't know that--I mean, that's what we've been working up to, up to this point, just like in the previous section. We've set down all the provisions and the groundwork, and under these provisions, the governor can then go out and borrow, issue, float a bond to be able to finance the projects by the consent decree. In the second section, we were laying the groundwork as to the alternative to actually borrowing the money and to try and get an investor in. We've been laying that groundwork. Now we get to the final section here, but then we're saying, we've laid all that groundwork, and then we want them to come back again to look at the details of a lease-back arrangement. And I don't know that we--you know, just earlier, there was a provision that we had amended, because the gentleman, an earlier speaker, had indicated that, you know, let's not get into the micromanaging of who the contractor is and all those details, but instead, let the legislature be the one to set the direction. Are we going to privatize? Are we going to lease-back, lease-lease-back, as it's called here? And it was agreed earlier that that's basically the role that we will play. Point them in the direction that we want them to go. And then we've laid all these ground rules. Now we're saying, okay, we're satisfied with all the ground rules, go and lease-back. But the gentleman's amendment basically just kind of unravels all that. So I would respectfully object to the amendment.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Carvalho, on the proposed amendment, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, I share the similar sentiments of the earlier speaker, and how I made mention in my earlier discussion, this is something that is not unique or new. It is something in the most recent past. It's been a tool that has been used in these very difficult financial times to build new schools. And as a matter of fact, there's been very little of the legislative participation in this process. I wish those folks were still in here, too, because it would appear with this language being put in, again, there are changes to the original scenario of how the original lease-back came about with the school, with the building of new schools. And maybe that's a question that I can ask not only those folks that were responsible in the administration for moving the lease-back program, but also for the author of the amendment, is if there's--I would suppose we would put an amendment in, looking forward, based on some perceived or actual issues that occurred with the first. You always try to improve on things. And again, since we already have, in the recent past, these schools that have been constructed, and I don't think they had this type of degree of legislative oversight or actual control over, and if maybe there was something that the author of the amendment saw in the earlier program that would require this additional oversight or control by the legislature. And I'm not going to ask the author of the amendment that question. I'm just thinking out loud, and maybe in his closing statements, in helping me to decide whether I'll go for or against this amendment, if you can give some further explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Carvalho. Any further discussion on the Rector amendment? No further discussion. Speaker Panglinen, on the recommend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I certainly understand the amendment and support it. I think that, you know, with the schools, one major difference is that the school's total repayment is outside the appropriation authorization of the government of Guam. It's totally secured by the compact impact, which, in my mind, disputable, but not in the way it works at this time, because it's completely 100% federal funds, and so there's no fallback to the general fund and to the people of Guam. Should we not be able to pay that, then we're under no further obligations, but then we got to move somewhere, you know? We don't make the payments, then we got to yank those kids out of the school. So in reality, any kind of default that threatens the continued education of our children in those schools, we're going to have to cough up the money somehow, and it's going to have to be this body that coughs it up. And it really is, to me, I think about it every day. What happens if the governor, you know, wakes up on the wrong side of the bed and says, "I don't want to use compact impact anymore to pay for those schools, you know? I'm not going to make a payment." And then the person who constructed that school says, "You're not making a payment? You're not getting a school. Vacate the school." It's the same with this, you know? So we have to, at least for ourselves, understand what the possible ramifications are, should we not be able to make our payments under these lease-back provisions, should the revenues of the system not be able to fully support it. Where are we going to then come up with the money, and what kind of money do we have to come up with? We know nothing about that. We have no say in that kind of terms, in those areas for the terms and conditions on it. And it's the same argument we're at today now. The governor obligated this government to $160 million. Even he didn't know how much he obligated this government to. He thought he obligated this government maybe to $40 million, $60 million. That's what the governor thought, I would venture to say, when he signed that consent decree. He thought the total implementation cost for the--to resolve the matter of the Niche de Ordant into the Longfitt River and the construction of a new landfill, because that's what Public Works gave him, that it was going to cost about maybe $47 million. Low and behold, when we got better and better numbers, or in this case, what I think are worse and worst numbers, it's now $160 million, you know? And we had no idea, and now we're having to grapple with finding $160 million. So it's the same with the lease-back. If they're going to do it all, and then if you see in the provision in here that if we don't make it, then the contractor can--the department shall be required to vacate the premises. So in other words, the Department of Public Works, which is responsible for that, would have to vacate, the government of Guam would have to vacate the new landfill, and we cannot use that new landfill under the terms and conditions of the lease-back to place our solid waste there. We are now at the mercy of this person who built this thing now, and we're not--so all the lease-back provisions are out, so there's no control over the price. So we are now between a rock and a hard place with regards to the fact that now, when tipping fees are at $40 and we don't make our payments, and he says, "Vacate the premises," now he says, "Sorry, you got no other choice. I'm the only game in town." And what do we do? We have to then, in this body, figure out a way to come up, because we're not going to let that happen, just as if we don't make our payments to the Ironwood people or International Bridge Capital, if we don't make our payments, he says, "Take the kids out of these buildings. You no longer have a school." We're not going to let that happen. We're going to have to come up, yet we don't have any idea or any say at all in even beginning to think that, hey, if this happens somehow, I've got to take a look at every year that we do the budget. I've got to take--just keep in mind where I could take a million dollars a week to make school pay, you know, building payments or something, you know, without sacrificing, you know? And so that's why I think we need to look at those terms. We need to understand, we need to see for ourselves, we need to look at what the requirements are today, and in the event something happens, what the requirements are would be, and where we could look at that and find that. And we have to have a little bit of a say in that, and I think that that's what this gives us the right to do, you know? We're looking at government property. There's a law that says any time you alienate and you lease government property, that the legislature has to approve that lease. Yet they want me--this provision wants me to approve a lease without knowing what it is, without knowing any other terms. There's no price in here at all. There's no range of price on the lease-back arrangements, except maybe to support the bonds or the construction that they've put in, but I don't know any of that. So I would like to be able to see that and try and make a decision on it and so forth, and issue some kind of guidance and so forth to the administration for the terms and conditions. And so that's what this--it is my fiduciary responsibility, you know, to the people of Guam, and that's why I think this amendment is a good amendment. I don't think it's a roadblock amendment. I don't think it's a train wreck amendment. I don't think it's any of that at all. I think it's an amendment that says that this legislature needs to do its job, perform its fiduciary responsibility to the people of Guam in terms of entering and obligating this government, and in the event that we're not able to meet it, where are we going to get the money from, and so forth. And, you know-- know, without this provision, we can start pointing fingers next week. With this provision, once we enter that, we can't point fingers anymore, because we all had a say in it. And that's really going to be the difference between being able to work together afterwards or point fingers later. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. On the amendment by Senator Rector, any further discussion? Senator Rector, would you like to close on your amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yet, you know, lease-back agreements, I haven't seen the specifics of the schools that we currently have under lease-back agreements, but I have the benefit of knowing people that have been involved in these all across the country. And the state of New York just went through a huge study on this, looking at all of their lease-back agreements. I mean, states having trouble with money is not a situation unique only to Guam. The state of New York has gone through this multiple times. And when they went back and studied, they found out that their lease-back agreements were costing the taxpayer way, way, way more than any other form of financing to build the facilities that they built on a lease-back. And, you know, that's one thing I'm very concerned about. I mean, it's this legislature's fiscal responsibility to oversee the budget and to oversee the appropriations of money. And somehow, I feel to give a blanket, blank check to the governor without, in any way, looking at how that money is actually going to be spent and what we're actually going to get for it. Yeah, I mean, if it's, what, are we going to lease an acre? Are we going to lease 10 acres? Are we going to lease 100 acres? Is there a sublease provision that lets them sublease it if we miss a payment to the military to put a bombing range on? You know, and that's a little bit of exaggeration, mind you. But let's be serious. It is our responsibility to make sure our money's spent well. You know, it's been told to me that a lease-back agreement, similar to a rent-to-own situation, right? If you can't afford to buy the TV you want today, you can go rent it for a very expensive price. Now, the problem is, what you pay for rental, you could have bought 10 TVs over the cost of a year. And I don't want to see the same situation the government of Guam. Our kids need good schools. Did we, are we really spending enough to build 10 schools for the price for what we're getting three because of our lease-back agreement and bad financing? I don't know. I haven't looked at that. But I want to make sure that, now that I'm in the legislature, that I'm not a party to giving up that right and that overseen, how would you say that? That overseen of the oversight, thank you very much, that oversight of that money. So, I think this should come back to the legislature. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On the rector amendment, all those in favor, there's been objection, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Two, three, four, six, seven. I'm sorry, let me recount again, please signify by raising your hands. Amendment passes. I stand corrected. Senator Rory was walking into the room and I missed discount. Any further action on Section 6? Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
No, I wanted to add a new Section 7.
Any further action on Section 6 or discussion? If not, two-minute recess.
Okay, they released the checks with GPS. How about everybody else?
Yeah, so they, when you tell them done, they just need to go back to the school, pick it up.
Well, Doreen said it was a glitch, but it was really one point, computer glitch is what they're saying.
GPS?
Yeah.
So, they all went to the governor's office to complain, people?
Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah. So, they released the money to the teachers, yeah.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, and then, we got a call from the courts, and they said that they're the ones that called it in. It was Dan that called it in to the media. So, I said, "Oh, that's our money, but Dan should be the one to call in." They said, "We don't have enough money." Even the courts who had the problem, yeah, you're right. Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't got any parts yet.
No, I have a couple.
Frank, can we call Ali to find out? Ali in Piafo?
Frank, can we call Ali to find out where Ali is?
I just want to be a certain part of the order.
to ensure that we complete any reference and discussion of the lease, lease-back option, we're going to revert back to page 35. There was a request previously when we were discussing subsection 51910, that in fact, we revert back to that for further consideration. Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker of the 27 Guam Legislature, Vice Speaker.
Vice Speaker.
Yeah. I would like to just renew my motion then, based upon additional discussion with my colleagues, to just delete 51910. Point 10. 59, 51, 9, 10.
On the amendment by Speaker Panglinen, page 35, to delete subsection 51910, any discussion?
We discussed it earlier.
We discussed it earlier, but any further discussion on the proposed amendment? No objections. So ordered. Thank you, Speaker Panglinen. Please ensure the clerk's aware of the appropriate change. Moving on to the section right after Section 6, any discussions? Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I circulated a two-page amendment that I neglected to put my initials on the top of. But I'd like to add a new Section 7, I guess it would be on page 39.
Speaker, Vice Speaker Cruz, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The amendment that I'm adding reads as follows, notwithstanding any other provision of law, and pursuant to the authority granted to the legislature by Section 1423-J or Chapter 2 of the Organic Act of Guam, Illeja Zaturn Guahan hereby asserts its authority to appropriate funds and determine the conditions for expending such appropriations. No public official of the government of Guam, including but not limited to Imaga Laihin Guahan, the treasurer of Guam, the director of the Department of Administration, and the director of the Bureau of Budget and Management, shall transfer or expend any public funds to comply with the February 13, 2009 Order of the Chief Judge of the District Court of Guam, relative to civil case number 02-0022, to deposit the amount of $993,700 or any other amount, beginning March 1, 2009, weakly to Citibank, for the purpose of constructing a landfill in La Zon Danden, or any other order that purports to legally direct any official of the government of Guam to expend funds without any legislative authorization or appropriation.
On the proposed amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz, Vice Speaker Cruz, you may proceed. Discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chairman, when the U.S. Congress created the government of Guam, and it created the Guam Legislature, it gave the Guam Legislature two specific authorities. One, to appropriate funds and to control the purse strings of the government, and two, to confirm or deny confirmation of appointments made by the governor. Unfortunately, we have abdicated a lot of that second one, but I'm not, that's not what I'm discussing here today. What I'd like to be able to do with this amendment, Mr. Chairman, is to reassert this legislature's authority. For those of us that did take civics in seventh grade, there are three branches of government, and it's very specific in the Organic Act that the power to appropriate and the power to authorize the expenditure of appropriated funds lies with the legislature. I don't believe any court can or should have that authority. I've circulated to all of you a copy of a Second Circuit opinion of the United States Court of Appeals, Second Circuit, New York State Association for Retarded Children, et al., versus Hugh Carey, the governor of the state of New York. All of you have had a chance to review that opinion, and I think all of you saw the provisions in there that talks about the fact that the court, the federal court, should not be imposing itself upon the local state government to take money out of its funds, or even to force the governor to exercise his transfer authority to take money to fulfill a consent decree, similar to the consent decree in this case, though the sum is considerably different. It's about a one-tenth of the, actually, one-one-hundredth of the amount that we're talking about. But the thing is, is that same authority of not being able to, of recognizing that, we've got to reassert our authority and say, if we decide as a legislature that we are directing the governor that he is not, and I repeat, not, capital N-O-T, not to spend any money as it relates to this extortionary threat by the chief judge to take money from us at the rate of $993,000, that none of them are authorized to be able to transfer for that money. I realize that some may consider this to be obstructionist, or this may be a roadblock. I don't care what you call it. But I, again, you know, I know many of you think that I'm on some kind of strange drug, but I didn't, I didn't just dream this up. This was a decision that was issued by the Second Circuit of the federal court, you know? And I wish I had the original thought for this, but I'm not. I'm not claiming it. The Second Circuit is probably considered the best circuit in all of the circuits. It's from which the current chief justice and many of the chief justices come from, and it's considered the best circuit in the country. And in that case, they said that the judge had no authority to insert himself into and start ordering to take money from the state treasury. All of you have the case in front of you. You've had a chance to review it, and many of you have spoken to your respective legal counsels about it. I'm just saying that we need to reassert our authority. In the 40 years since I started law school, there has only been one time that I can recall when the U.S. Supreme Court has told us that the legislature did not have the authority to do a certain act, and that was, unfortunately, the creation of the Supreme Court in 1972. But that authority was since delegated to us. But for the 60 years this has been a created government by the Organic Act, there is one power that is ours, and one power that we must, as legislators, jealously protect, and that's the power to appropriate and expend funds. And in this case, I know all of us are concerned. Many of us were concerned a few minutes ago when we had heard that the checks hadn't been released to a number of the agencies, and the fact that the administration officials aren't here because of some glitch, or the fact that there was a shortage of revenue at the present time. Mr. Chairman, I think it's important that we, as a legislature, speak loudly and clearly to the district court judge and to the governor, that we are reasserting our authority as the legislator. This is the same case I'd been referring to for the last several months, when I announced that I thought that the district court judge had overstepped her bounds by rejecting Senator Tina's amendment in the previous law, saying that no funds could be used without specific appropriation from the legislature. She has since softened her position and acknowledged the fact that the legislature and the executive have the policymaking authority, and it's ours to exercise. And I'm asking this body to support me in this one action of just saying, you can order us to try to do a bond that is not going to float. You can order us to tell us that it's 9%, which wouldn't fly anyway, but you have absolutely no authority to tell us that out of our treasury, you are going to come in and take $993,000 a week for the next 60 weeks to take care of this, I mean, 100... weeks to take care of this, I mean, hundred, hundred and eighty weeks to take care of this, this, this landfill. So I ask my colleagues to please support the approval of this one provision, reestablishing ourselves as a legislature. Otherwise, if we don't, we might as well return our certificates, return our PIMS, and return our salaries and go home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Cruz. Any discussion on this particular amendment? Senator Tenoy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's assume that everything we just heard is correct, that the Chief Judge has no authority to take this money out of our general fund. She cannot extract the monies, and as a consequence, there is one option available to her, as I understand it. That option is to close or to dump. All right? Let's play this out. So the government of Guam doesn't pay out a million dollars or so every week. Then you have a government and a private sector who has no place to place their refuge, their trash. What happens then, Mr. Chairman, rhetorically speaking? You have your house, people's apartments, hotels, businesses around the island, cannot have their press picked up because there's no place to put it. That is the, as I understand it, that's the option. You have the one choice to either finance this bond, do a lease-leaseback arrangement so that, but we've already eliminated that because they still need to come back to legislature and get approval to lease, but that's pretty much done. So either finance it through a bond or finance it through your pocketbook. Now, if it's not financed through our pocketbook and the general fund is closed because we have the authority to say, no one shall give money by virtue of the order of the District Court, so we snub our nose one more time at the District Court and say, we're not going to give you the money. We close the order of dump instead, because that is the choices, I understand it. That's the option of the system. Judicial branch, the District Court will close or to dump. Then what? Every one of this community will be facing health hazards, I think. Where are we then? We're really helping the people of Guam? We have a responsibility to finance this. We have a responsibility to do this for a long time, and every single time, I mean, we've been talking about amendment after amendment after amendment here, and every one of them is, come back to the legislature for approval again. Yeah, you can go get a bond, six percent. Great. You can call it whatever you want. You can call it roadblock, landmine, IED, nuclear bomb. At the end of the day, every one of these, as I can see it, is going to lead to one thing or two. Either you're going to have a million dollars taken out of the general fund and catastrophic consequences to everybody in this government and everybody within this community who's going to be affected by the services of this government, or closure of this dump, which will affect every living soul on this island. So you have the authority to assert your right as the legislature, as authorized by the Organic Act? Great. What's the alternative? We have one thing that was given to us, to be able to finance this operation. Far as I can see, we haven't done that. We have a less viable funding option now. We have, as I understand it, based on everything I've been told, even by the receiver, this is not a viable financing option. You have probably a higher interest rate, and yeah, it's going to cost more for the people of Guam. Yeah, it's going to cost more for the people of Guam. You know, I thought I had rough reasons to question whether or not this bill would even stand a chance. You know, Mr. Chairman, I really don't know what this body is doing. Mr. Chairman, I object to this amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenoy. On the Vice Speaker Cruz amendment, Senator Cavill, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there is also another option available to the judge, other than closing order, can impose fines. And again, my concern is if we're to move forward in this confrontation with the court, I'm not too sure whether the ultimate reason for why we're here, whether we'll come any closer to that conclusion, which is, again, the closure of ordot and the opening of a new landfill or whatever alternative facility there is to handle our solid waste. And this is where I'm kind of torn. If this were a ninth, and I have to agree with the Chief Justice, if it were a Ninth Circuit opinion, then I'd have some serious problems, because the Ninth Circuit has had many, many of their cases or their deliberations and acts reversed by higher courts, such as the Supreme Court. The Second Circuit is very respected, it is a very, as far as I'm concerned, a very good system to which we can decide on, or how would you say, rely in regards to what the powers of this body is, a legislative body, the administrative branch, the courts. So looking at the opinion put forward, again, a few days ago by the senator from PT, I'm in general agreement. I think there are certain areas of responsibility and authority for differing branches of And what I'm torn about is, in the issue dealing with separation of powers, he has a very strong point. The issue I have right now at this point is this is not the venue nor the bill to move forward in that action. We're here in discussion and debate in regards to Bill Fund 51. This is not a budget bill. This is not a supplementary budget bill. This is specific on certain authorization for funding. This provision added into this particular bill, as far as I'm concerned, brings up the question of germaneness, which I will, again, bring up when I end this, when I end my statement. I don't think it belongs here. This is a major policy statement with this amendment, and with that, I think, again, it is something that would go very well as a standalone bill that would have, of course, a public hearing. And with that public hearing, I'd be very interested to have the statements put forward, not only by the administration, but of course by representatives of the court system and the Attorney General. And you know what? If it were a bill that were introduced separately, I would listen to those comments, I would, I'm not a lawyer, I admit it. I'm torn because I've seen some cases that back this up, this provision. There's a certain belief that I have as a senator of this 30th Guam Legislature that also inclined me to go in favor of this. I just think that this is something that will, if this passes, well, two things. Number one, it would have been put in something which I consider as non-german to this particular bill, and then number two, it would already poison, which I believe is a poisoned atmosphere that is not conducive to this community, this legislature, this administration, the receiver and the courts, working collaboratively towards coming to a solution for closing ordot and opening new landfills. So, Mr. Chair, with that, I am going to call for your opinion, Mr. Chairman. I do believe that this is a very noteworthy amendment, but it is my opinion, based on some, I remember even in the question of the rules, in the dialogue of the rules of this body, of this supermajority, and it was some very, very strong and heated debate between members of this majority as to what provisions that would go into a budget bill, a budget bill, a budget bill, even between the chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means and his own colleagues and other chairmans, the Rules Chairman, very powerful people that control the policy of this legislature. This is not a budget bill. It's not a supplement to the budget, and I pull forward and I bring forward, again, the questions even you, as a Democratic caucus, brought to light in the discussion and the debate of the rules. So, again, Mr. Chair, I, it is my opinion, and again, I am just one, that though this is a very noteworthy amendment, and again, if it was introduced as a separate standalone bill, I would indeed be very, very interested in listening to the debate, where we invite the public and all those that may be interested to share in the discussion so that we can then move forward and deliberate and make a very, very, what we believe, the right decision in how we would move on this, but to add this, this measure in this bill, I think would be, again, an injustice, and again, where our legislature is moving in a direction that how, again, we originally discussed this in the beginning of the 30th Guam Legislature, a direction which is opposite to which I think we all intended. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and again, I would like to call the germaneness question.
Thank you very much, Senator Cavill. In reference to your question of whether, in fact, the proposed amendment is germane to the nature of the discussion of Bill Number 51, in seeking legal guidance from our legal counsel, because of the nature of action or inaction on the part of the legislature in passing a revenue bond or a general obligation bond and is directly related to perceived, impending, imposed, whether we want to call it penalties or fees, by the courts, that this particular proposed amendment has been ruled germane and applicable thereon. So, thank you very much, Senator Cavill. Senator Palacios, on the Vice Speaker Cruz amendment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, while I may agree, of course, so heartily with the Cruz amendment, at this point, Mr. Chairman, perhaps I would like to have this fight, of course, taken, but I wonder whether, how long it will take for the train to come and take us to the arena to fight this. If it's going to take two months, and we're facing, ten days from now will be March 1st, or rather, eight days from now, nine days from now will be March 1st. I think that something is going to happen if nothing come out of this legislature in the version of Bill 51, and while it's possible that, of course, the judge probably might close the order of dump, which I don't think it's probable, probably the lesser penalty probably would be fine, but what is very real in my mind, as we lose every day of precious days remaining, is layoffs. There will be layoffs if nothing come out of this. Reduce hours, thirty-two-hour work week, reduce government services. The governor has to find, within his own power, through executive order, has to find about a million dollars a week, and he's going to have to find it from the current fiscal appropriation. And so that is the nightmare that I had to deal with in going through this. I don't like that. I don't like to owe, what, $300 million more than what it would take to, but what is the alternative? Again, the citation by the judge is very credible, and I'm willing to bet that that is very valid, but I'm afraid that we may not have time to find out whether that really would be the case. So I may have to, in the interest of progressing, with what we're discussing now, trying to find a solution to avert very, very disastrous consequences, I guess, March, nine days from now, I have to continue to go through in the progress of finding solutions, and I have to withhold my support of the Cruz amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Rispio, and then Senator Guttis. Senator Rispio, you're recognized. On the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, fundamentally, for me, it's the power of the legislature to appropriate funds. The governor cannot appropriate or cannot spend any money unless the legislature appropriates these monies for certain projects. And if we're going to agree with that premise, then I don't see why there would be an objection to the amendment being offered by the senator from PT. One of the things that majority of us have questioned is the governor's ability to spend upwards of seven to 10 million dollars on this La John side, ignoring various procurement laws, ignoring the basic principle that the legislature proposes, the administration disposes, and I just can't believe some of the things I'm hearing from the previous speakers. I mean, I know that we're all concerned with the ultimate consequence of any action or inaction, and that's the judge's threat of the one million dollars per week, but why can't we just recognize that from the beginning of this consent decree process, the governor of Guam unilaterally entered into an agreement which caused a more expensive solution to solving this solid waste crisis? And this is exactly what the governor and his people would like for the legislature to respond, and if they were hearing, listening to some of the comments of the previous speakers, I think they would be elated to know that they have a legislature that's just going to roll over and not provide a check and balance to the administration and hold these people accountable. This amendment is very clear. It asserts our right as a legislative body to make these appropriations. The only instance where the legislature has kind of given up our right is under times of emergency disasters, man-made or natural, this legislature has given the governor the ability to spend money up to $250,000 when there's an emergency, and that's fine, because you want to give the governor the immediate tools to go and assist these families and tend to these disasters. But in this case, we're talking about the potential for an economic disaster if we continue to go down this road under the guise of the consent decree. I think one of the things that I've, that I truly believe in, in being a member of this legislative branch, is first and foremost, you honor the institution, and we have an obligation, we have a responsibility to not only ourselves, but to future members of this institution, to protect this institution's inherent powers given to us by the Constitution and the Organic Act, which requires that these taxpayers' monies be appropriated by the legislature. The last sentence is very clear. It says, "without any legislative authorization or appropriation." So is that, is that really a stumbling block by requiring legislative authorization or appropriation for any money to be spent for this project? We already saw the damage that this administration has done to our island over the last six years because they just operated under the guise of the years, because they just operated under the guise of this consent decree. And the Attorney General, when we questioned whether or not they violated the procurement law, whether or not they ignored all the local laws, we passed a resolution that contained 19 pages of fact, factual information that we presented to the courts, which the chief judge just threw it out as quickly as it was brought before her, saying that the site has already been chosen. That's the reason why we're in this situation. And if you look at every single person that's been an obstacle to truly solving this problem, think you'd recognize that every single person has had their hand in this because they want to make some money. And that's what it all comes down to, Mr. Chairman, is all the conflicts that have occurred over the years that are just now being raised. If we're concerned about whether or not the judge is going to take a million dollars a week, and it would threaten all of our Governor of Guam employees, governors even threaten to withhold payments of tax refunds, have a 32-hour work week, and a 10% across-the-board cuts in order to meet this $1 million a week, the best way to avert that, Mr. Chairman, so we have a true standing and we have a legal fight on our hands, is to adopt this amendment. This is the best way to protect all these hard-working Governor of Guam employees that we say that we're standing up for and we're protecting. This is the best way to protect all the taxpayers who are owed their tax refunds, but if the court order of $1 million a week stands, and they won't be able to get their tax refunds, this is the best way to ensure that vital public services, health, education, public safety are met. Because this amendment clearly says that the governor, the treasurer of Guam, the director of administration, the BBMR, shall not transfer or expend any public funds to comply with the order unless there's legislative authorization or appropriation. So if you really, colleagues, if you really want to prevent this thing from happening, or at least give us some standing to prevent something like this from happening, I say, please adopt this amendment. The gentleman from PD who cited the second circuit case, you know, he does his research, he's a former chief justice, and in order for us to have standing, we must first prevent it. If we don't put this amendment in, who knows? Maybe the governor might give a little bit more than a million dollars a week, because he's been very ambitious. So, Mr. Chairman, I rise in full support of this amendment, and I think that the most fundamental thing we should do is to assert our right as a legislature to require that if any money is to be spent by the Governor of Guam, it must be first legislatively appropriated. And that's exactly what this amendment reads. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispio. Senator Guttard, on the Vice Speaker Cruz amendment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support the amendment, but my reasons are a little different. I'm of the opinion that regardless of what we do here on Bill 51 at this time, that the judge will, in fact, order the garnishment of close to $1 million every week beginning March 1st. And she will do that while she is waiting for any bond proceeds to come that may be authorized by legislation we pass, with the idea, perhaps, of reimbursing the government of Guam for any monies that are garnished when those bond proceeds come. I believe that the court is going to do its thing regardless, until it sees the monies here transferred to the accounts of the receiver. I also believe that it's incumbent upon us to pass this amendment, to make it very clear that this legislature does not endorse in any form the garnishment of those monies every week, and that we believe the court may be overstepping its bounds when it does or attempts to do that. If we do not put this provision in this bill, it is tantamount to acquiving to the court to take those monies. We have to take a stand, Mr. Chairman, and that stand is that we don't believe the court has the authority to take those funds, based on Supreme Court decisions, US Supreme Court decisions, and that we are not going to acquit this in the event the court attempts to do that. By including this provision in this bill, it will give us, I believe, the legal authority to challenge any such action of the court, should it occur. In the absence of this provision, it is almost like accepting the authority of the federal court to take money from our treasury. So that's why I believe, Mr. Chairman, this provision is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Guttard. On the Vice Speaker Cruz amendment, Senator Taitiwe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, before I might go to jail, I kind of like want to know if the AG can come in here, committee of the whole, and give us an opinion about this circumstance, what we're in. I mean, I've never personally, keeping Section 30 in as an option into this bill would have maybe, but most likely, avoid this $1 million a week. Now we've gone down this road and taken it out, and then putting this in, are we forgetting that there's still fines that can be encumbered upon us from the judge with regards to the Clean Water Act? What stops her from saying, okay, no $1 million a week, let's put in, put these penalties and fines on with the dump, because we're not in compliance? We're going down a very scary road here, and I would really, would like to hear the opinion of the AG. I like his amendment, BJ's amendment, so that the people of Guam doesn't incur this $1 million a week coming up, but I would beg to ask that this committee bring in the AG for her opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Taitiwe. Any other discussion on the proposed amendment, the Vice Speaker Cruz? Senator Rector, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so here we go. You know, I want to make it perfectly clear, I'm completely dedicated and committed to finding the funding source and closing Orda dump and opening a new dump as soon as humanly possible. And I think this body's worked really hard on Bill 51 to make it something that is good for all the people of Guam. By the same token, I will do everything humanly possible in my power to keep the 12,000 Guam employees and their families from suffering the full brunt of the funding for this endeavor. It isn't fair, it isn't right, and there is no way, shape, or form that these families should suffer because of 40 years of inaction at whoever's fault it is that we're in the mess we're in now, but it certainly can't be said to be their fault, and they should not have to suffer for it. So, the author of this amendment, good gosh, is a judge, and he quoted some very good, some very good legal precedent. I don't think by passing this amendment, we're any of us are in any way, shape, or form saying that we're not going to go through and finish this bond. I think this is going to give us the impetus to finish this even faster and to move forward in a more diligent manner, without the guillotine swinging over our heads that the people that support us and support the entire island, the good public servants that make this island run, are going to suffer and their families are going to suffer. So I rise in support of this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Any other discussion on the Vice Speaker Cruz amendment? Senator Blas and then Senator Munyabat. Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, I agree with Senator Cruz, but the question that I got is what have we been doing for the last three days? And what of the work that we've been doing for the last three days? What does that do now? And that's the question that is toiling through my mind, is we're concerned about making sure that we don't tap this fund or that fund, so that we can float a bond? And then we had a discussion as to the parameters and the authorities that are going to be needed to get a company to come in and do a leaseback? Then we have this. So, and I'm looking at you, Mr. Chair, and I know the rules of engagement, and I know the rules with regards to the committee hall, and I don't, maybe as a question I need to pose to the body? And maybe hopefully somebody within the body can yield to the question. What does this do to the work we've done over the last three days? It goes to the concern that was brought up by my good colleague from Mitie, where his struggle with this thing too, is that he agrees. I agree also with my good colleague and cousin from Ganya Heights, that this is, this does test in as far as what our inherent paras are. And we should discuss it, and it should be done. But what of the work, what of the bond and of the leaseback provisions that we were working And so, I'm just wondering, and I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of the chief executive, and he's looking at this bill, and they say it becomes law, what does he do next? So that is my struggle here, Mr. Chair. And I'm hoping that as we continue the discussion here, that somebody's going to be able to answer that question. I think it's no big secret in as far as this hall as to what my personal and what my feelings are with regards to borrowing. But I want to make it known too, like I said, I don't have a problem with this. My concern is what if, what of the work we've been doing over the last three days? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Munyabat, you're recognized, on the Vice Speaker Cruz amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this amendment. Mr. Chair, as I share the sentiments of my good brother in Baragot, and I agree wholeheartedly with the amendment that's proffered in front of us right now, Mr. Chair, I want to state for the record, and I probably only have a couple of minutes to doing that, that there was a reason why there were three branches of government that were created in this island. And as I understand it clearly, it was to instill some checks and balances. And if there's one thing that was known for the creation of this body, that was noted was, in reference to the good author of the amendment from PD that quoted, we've got to make sure as an august body, that when we do something, that when we legislate something, and that we, and that when we authorize something, that in the ultimate end, it would be the benefit, and it would safeguard the people of Guam in general, and not just the interested field. And you know, Mr. Chair, if we were to go back and give you a history on the issue that's pending before us, I can give you the history far back, three decades, even four, even as far back as the '60s after World War II. That's okay, that's okay if I'm giving my age away, Mr. Chair, because it's really important to know that when I took an oath, I took an oath to safeguard and to protect and to provide the quality of services that our people of Guam need. And first and foremost, safety, health, safety, education for our people. And you know, Mr. Chair, this, I'm going on my third term, and when I first came in in the 27th Guam Legislature, I committed to the people of Guam that I will attempt to close Orda dump and look for a site, that, Mr. Chair, that was already existing. I didn't vote for it, I said that several days ago. And I went down on a path that would bring some history of what was going on. And because of differences of perspective and differences of opinion, we're still at the same boat 30, 40 years later. But you know, Mr. Chair, it is still very, very vital that this august body remember that the decisions we make today will definitely impact the people and our children for generations to come. And when I have to think about protecting the validity of what we need to survive, it ain't just money, Mr. Chair. We have a God-given gift that He has blessed us with, and that is the value, the gift of water, the best gift in the world that can be blessed on this beautiful island. And I'm going to do anything and everything to protect it, but I also got to understand that I've also got to make sure that the community is protected environmentally, socially, economically, and as far as the welfare. And what we have before us continues to be a debate that is very one-sided. And even as recent as the several days that have, that have we been journeying down this path, Mr. Chair, there are other alternatives that we can look at. But the one thing that this body was instilled to us was to do its duty as prescribed through the Organic Act. And let me tell you, today, and yesterday, and today, I personally feel that that's been violated. And with this amendment, it will, it will set a clear clarification of what our duties are here, and that every branch, every entity that governs, that protects the community of Guam should understand. But some may have forgotten, some may have forgotten that, oh, you know what, we don't need to listen, that's not our branch, we can do as we please, but you know what, there is a reason why there was, there were these different branches instilled. And I'm going to tell you, Mr. Chair, we would be doing this aug- we would be doing this August body an injustice if we were not to clarify this point specifically today. And what is it going to do for us today? It doesn't stop us from proceeding and moving this journey forward on trying to find the best way without hurting anyone, without hurting or jeopardizing any child, any parent, any elder, anybody who lives here on Guam. This amendment will not hamper any of that. It just clearly states what we as this August body, what we were given when this August body was instilled. So, Mr. Chair, like I said earlier, I can give you a whole history of this whole process that's been going down before us. And I've always said it was about the differences in perception or the differences in opinion and the differences of what should and should not be done. But I will tell you today that the amendment proffered before us is the best thing that could have been put before this body. Thank you.
Thank you very much Senator Munia Barnshea. Speaker Panglinen on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker of the 27th Guam Legislature. Mr. Vice Speaker. You know, when I first looked at the amendment, I think I had the same feeling that everybody had. It's like, where does this take us? What does this do? And where on the scale of risk with regards to running afoul of the court order and all the deliberations of the court, where does it move us closer to contempt or even the likelihood that the judge will make some other decision that may not be in the best interest of the same people we're trying to protect? And, you know, some of us worry about the effect of the implementation of the $1 million a week order and that what that will do to the lives and the disruptions it will cause to the lives of the government employees from where that million will have to be taken. Or not necessarily. It could be taken out of income tax refunds that we owe the people and instead of owing them refunds for three years, we're going to owe them for five, six, seven years. That would be the immediate effect. The, what I would call generational effect of this thing is, what does it do for this island as a government when the authority vested in the people of Guam and in its elected representatives can now be usurped by a process that, from all appearances, is not legal? With regards to the intervention of the court, of a federal court, to come in and order the representatives of this government to take money that has been legally authorized and appropriated by the elected representatives of the people of Guam under the authority vested to them by the Organic Act of Guam, our de facto constitution, and all be turned upside down? You know, that's the generational effect. That's the self-determination effect of this issue, even without self-determination. And that's offensive enough as it is, this lack of self-determination and the inability of the United States to support that process for our people. And this move and disorder, you know, even goes against the powers granted to the elected representatives of the people of Guam by the powers of the Congress. And taking a look at it from all of those perspectives, I began to like the amendment a little bit more. You know. I liked it from the beginning, what the hell. The effect of this amendment is, is, is one thing, I think it clears the air. Because I hate for Mr. Manning to keep telling the judge that, you know, because those guys don't want to pass a bond, they are deciding that they're going to do it by cash and the cash is $1 million a week, so tell him to give it to you. Well, it's going to be very clear now to Mr. Manning and to the judge that this legislature is deciding that it does not want to fund the construction of the landfill by the use of $1 million a week. They cannot infer, they cannot think because if we pass this bond, then we are telling the court, we are in fact making it. And as a matter of fact, we're telling our people that we have now acted affirmatively on a bond that is viable to construct a landfill and close Oradot. And we are now telling our officials of the government of Guam that we have decided not to. And when they tell you to do it, don't do it. Because our decision is the bond financing. There was a little bit of a window on the bond financing thing, you know, that not only must this legislature pass the bond financing, but the governor must in good faith go out and execute and try to sell the bonds. What would happen if the governor decided he didn't like, he didn't like the terms and conditions of the bonds that were ultimately passed, even though they were viable? And he just doesn't want to travel off island anymore? You know? And he doesn't want to go to Wall Street? And that he's not going to try and sell the bonds? And he decides to pay a million a week? What would that do? Well, this statement says that's the decision of the legislature is that we do not want to use the cash payment method of $1 million a week to construct that landfill. Here is the bond, here's the authorization, it is viable, let's move forward. And so what this does is it affirms the legislature's authority granted by, you know, for lack of self-determination by the federal government and the US Congress to the elected representatives of this island, acting in their capacity as senators in the legislature in Guam. And so, that is why I think that I'm going to support this amendment. Because it clears up that air. You know, people forget what else we are foregoing by taking this Herculean effect effort maybe just to get this bond passed? You know? We are putting all our time into doing this and so forth so that we can avert this $1 million a week and this will help us do it and make a positive statement. But that we are foregoing work on all the other things that affect the lives of our people just to solve this because the US EPA, you know, decided at one time that you are violating this. Even though ladder tests of the Longfet River have shown that the contamination of the river, really because of the nature of that water source ebbs and flows and that a couple of years later, there's no pollution. Couple of years later, it comes back. Depending on the surge, depending on storms and so forth. Yet we're giving up all that because they said, no, you got to cure it, you're in violation of the Clean Water Act. Even though GWA has made great efforts and great strides to ensure that we no longer have contaminated water in our drinking tank. We're not contaminated in the water when we draw from it. And that the contamination that occurs on our beaches now is not directly linked to the contamination at Oradot. It's not there anymore. But it is a desirable goal and it is a goal that we want to fix the ability of the operation, of the, to fix and curtail any further contamination possibilities by closing Oradot and capping it. That's what we want to do. No argument there. So, what I would like to do in further support of this amendment is to ensure that we don't allow the transfer of funds to make these deposits at Citibank. And so I have proposed an amendment, Mr. Chair, which, to the amendment, which has been passed out. And it would strike the words, "For the purpose of constructing a landfill in Lejon." So that that portion of the amendment, of the Cruz amendment would read, "To deposit the amount of $933,700 or any other amount beginning on March 29th weekly to Citibank." And then you strike out the words I'd read and continue to read, "Or any other order that purports to legally direct any official of the government of Guam to expend funds without any legislative authorization or appropriation." And then it would further add then that "Any transfer authority granted to the governor in any previous law shall be deemed to be restricted for the purposes of that said law and shall not be extended to authorize any transfer of funds to or for deposit to Citibank as directed in the February 13, 2009 order of the District Court." And the last sentence would then read, "Any payment of fines pursuant to the consent decree shall not be paid except by specific authorization by the legislature for that purpose." And that the governor's transfer authority shall not extend or apply to transfers for the payment of court fines." You know, because we have decided we're not going to use cash methodology. We are moving forward in our reading of what is required under the consent decree order of passing a viable financing plan, which is at this time stands to be a bond issue guaranteed by the full faith and credit of the government of Guam, of which our financial experts have specifically said that structure is a viable financing alternative, or viable financing plan. So this is the, I would like to propose that my amendment to the Cruz amendment be placed before the body for disposition.
Thank you very much Speaker Panglinen. There's been an amendment by Speaker Panglinen proffered on the primary amendment. Any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Speaker Wampat, you had your hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I stand in support of this amendment in particular with the transfer authority because my colleagues remember in the 28th Guam Legislature, when we had passed the Budget Act, we've appropriated basically, you know, every penny to every department and there were even some shortfalls which we actually spent six to eight weeks in this legislature trying to rectify. And then, when there were monies available, and these were real cash from bonds that were available, $4 million of that was supposed to go to GPSS. And what had happened because of the previous legislation, the Budget Act gave the governor that transfer authority, he took real cash and the real cash that was available was that $4 million from GPSS that he took to pay for the fines for the landfill. And if there's anyone here who remembers that, based on that authorization, I do not want to see again the governor to access and use that transfer authority to once again take monies out of the government of Guam because we're talking about real cash now, $1 million of cash. Again, for the dump. So, I definitely support this and I hope my colleagues will please support this as well because it's a very real situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much Speaker Wampat. On Speaker Panglinen's amendment to the amendment, Senator Cavill, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the only complication I have here, again, reading the Second Circuit opinion, again...
I'm sorry Senator Cavill, we're on the amendment to the primary amendment?
The amendment, yes. But the amendment to the amendment is, you know, again, we're moving forward from, again, if you look at the Second Circuit opinion, again, it was based on, again, the state of New York. And I don't have it in front of me, but because of a desire by the courts to move forward in monies appropriated for a particular service or action needed to be taken by a government, now... There is a little bit, and this is where, gosh, I want to see what the... Well, what my concern is now, it's now focused on a fine. And it may be something, I wish the Attorney General was here because I was more in favor actually of the original amendment, but in this particular one, you're telling the chief executive, you can't pay a fine. And there may, now I see a divergence, again, how I was trying to do my mindset on, again, the spirit of this amendment, the original amendment, as tied into an original Second Circuit opinion. And now there is a bit of a difference. And it may be subtle, it may not be subtle, and that's why I do have a concern with this because now I do see that you're speaking a little bit on apples and oranges and maybe they're all same fruit basket, but there is a difference. And then that's why I just point this concern out. And it will lead me to even further complication as to how I decide how to vote on this amendment to the amendment depending on, or this amendment depending on how this amendment to the amendment passes. So, man, I'm hopeful maybe, you know, we do have one former Chief Justice here and I don't even know if I can refer or, you know, usually you ask the author of an amendment to the amendment to speak on this, but I'm actually asking, since I was more in favor and more in harmony with the mindset of the original author of the amendment, would he care to chime in on this? No, he doesn't. Okay. Then, I will, hopefully I'll get some clarity here when the mover of this amendment to the amendment makes his closing statement. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much Senator Cavill. On the amendment to the amendment by Speaker Panglinen, any further discussion? If not, Speaker Panglinen, would you like to close? Senator Wampat, you had a point of information?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, because the previous speaker was alluding to, you know, the second district where the governor was, where the opinion rather was that it says that no money shall ever be paid out of the state treasury on any of its funds or any of the funds under its management except in pursuance of an appropriation by law. And that appropriation says shall distinctly specify the sum appropriated and the object or purpose to which it is to be applied. And that's what he was saying. And it says here that the governor here can legally expend funds for, in that time was the review panel, only if the legislature has appropriated funds for that purpose. And it continues by saying the legislature did not appropriate funds for the review panel. On the contrary, it deleted the proposed line item for the review panel and it expressly stated its intention to deny such funding. So, and in this case, I guess this should answer the question where in this case, the monies were not, we're saying that it shouldn't, because it wasn't appropriated in the Budget Act, that it cannot and should not be used for that, for any other purpose other than what was appropriated.
Point of inquiry.
Thank you Speaker Wampat for that point of information. Senator Cavill?
Again, I'd just like to further point of inquiry to the previous speaker because she raises a good point. She has the opinion in front of her. And that's what I'm concerned about because there have been fines paid by this government in the past and even by certain agencies as a result of maybe a, a, some sort of violation from another government, imposed by another government agency. And I don't recall any type of appropriation that has been made for the payment of a fine. Again, particularly the state of New York, you know, I wish I have the full facts of the case, but again, we were not talking about a fine imposed. And remember, some of the discussions we had earlier, what the remedies were for the judge. And the original amendment, again, where I was in full, how would you say, I was in harmony, at least in understanding, with the mover of the amendment that based on that New York case, I saw consistency in his amendment. Now there has been a bit of a difference. There is, again, as far as I see, there's a... a little bit of a divergence from the, the language as, and the state of, the occurrences and the state of facts that occurred with that case. And, and that's why I'm just bringing it up. It may be subtle, but now you're, you're talking not about, about a service, uh, or a, um, uh, service to be provided by a government, and, again, imposing the will of a court on the, on paying for that service. But now, you're, you're also now, I, I do think the courts do have certain, um, also powers, and with those powers is a power for imposition of a, of a sentence or a fine. And, and now, this particular amendment to the amendment is, is potentially, and, and again, I stand, I stand corrected if I can get further clarification, it may be imposing on the, um, on also the responsibility and the authority of the courts. And of course, I see the Chief Justice shaking his head, so I may be, I may not be...
Senator Cavill, thank you for your...
But, anyway, that's my point of inquiry, and maybe she could further explain it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Cavill. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? Senator Cruz, Vice Speaker Cruz, did you want to comment?
I just wanted, as it relates to, there's no, we're not infringing on her authority to impose a fine. All we're saying is the governor cannot pay the fine unless we specifically appropriate it. That's all. She can, she can impose whatever fine she wants, and when we come around to appropriating it, we'll appropriate for it.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. Any further discussion? If not, on the amendment to, Vice Speaker, I mean, I'm sorry, Speaker Panglinen's amendment to the amendment. Speaker Panglinen, you may close.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, Mr. Chair, I certainly understand the dilemma that, uh, the good Senator from Mide was trying to wrestle with, and I, I thank him for taking the effort to try and, and get some clarification to, uh, see through the proposal here. And I almost thought that if I deleted the last sentence, he would vote for the amendment. But, oh, okay. But perhaps if I explained it further, he'd still vote for it even with this last sentence in. You know, the, um, the consent decree itself, of course, contemplates that, um, the consent decree contemplates that all the compliance and the need to, uh, to implement projects and expend money to make, to comply with the consent decree that the governor entered into, uh, is going to come from the Solid Waste Operations Fund. Uh, and it's very clear on that in, uh, section ten of the, uh, of the consent decree itself. And it says that, um, "Within a hundred and twenty days, the government of Guam shall submit the U.S. EPA financial plan for the funding of these actions identified in paragraphs eight and nine over time, including funding, funding source or sources, and a schedule to secure funds for capital and operating costs necessary to fully implement those actions." It goes further to state...
I'm sorry, Speaker Panglinen. Senators, please. Speaker Panglinen, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. And the parties agreed that the project shall be funded by the Solid Waste Operations Fund established by TENCGA, including the costs and expenses directly related to the closure of Ordo and the development, design, construction, operating of new landfills. But it also says here that the government of Guam shall use its best effort to obtain sufficient funding to fully implement the projects required by the consent decree. And it says that if, if funding from the Solid Waste Operations Fund is not sufficient to fully implement the projects, then the government of Guam shall seek funding through legislative appropriation, loans, grants, and rates charged for consumer services such as tipping or user fees. You know, so, if the governor feels that the fines are part of the consent decree requirement of the expenditures, and it's not enough, he may be able to take it, conceivably, I may grant him, that he may be able to take the fines and pay those fines out of the Solid Waste Operations Fund. And if he decides to do that, you know, then it's at least limited to that fund, uh, because he doesn't have to transfer the money out. But if he wants to pay more than that, and more than what he can take from that fund without jeopardizing his operations, then he comes down to the legislature and say, "I want to pay more of the fines, and I want an appropriation for it." It doesn't infringe on the judge's authority to impose the fines, as the good Chief Justice stated, but it does require the governor to work with the legislature to find the resources to pay those fines. And you know what? The fine at twenty thousand a day, twenty-five thousand a day, is maybe a dual way of financing this by cash. Certainly is less than four million a month, you know? But we will, we will deal with that. We will deal with the fines as they are imposed, and this body will have to come to grips and say, "If the fines are imposed, then we must find a funding source to pay for those fines," and so forth. So, again, it doesn't infringe on that, and, and the, the inclusion of the transfer authority is, is certainly on point with my good speaker's reading of the, of the decision. There has to be a prohibition on using funds for that purpose. That's why that court case stood, is because of the prohibition in the New York Constitution and law from moving and, and the way they, they didn't use transfer, they said, you know, upping and discharging the, 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 uh, the funds for the operations into one category or the other. But it basically means, you know, with the prohibition of transfer, the, then the governor can't legally expend the funds to do so. And that's really what we're trying to do here, is that any action that the governor must make in order to comply with the consent decree requires, you know, the expenditure of government funds must be approved by this body. I mean, that's our one duty, and I think this asserts that. Once again, I must say that it makes it very clear that it is the intent of this body to fund the consent decree projects through a bond issue that will be passed by this body. We all are working towards the passage of that, and not through a cash methodology of financing it of a million dollars a week. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. On Speaker Panglinen's amendment to the amendment, there be no objection. So ordered. On the primary amendment, Speaker Wampad, you had your hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, um, uh, let our, remind, I guess, our colleagues that last year, when we passed the appropriations bill authorizing the expenditures of, uh, like, six point one million dollars, and, and this is from the Solid Waste Operations Fund. So, that, that dollar amount was appropriated by this legislature for the, for the use of, uh, the Solid Waste, uh, Operations. And that's the only place in the Budget Act, and that's specifically in page three and twenty-eight, uh, if you want to go back to the Budget Act, uh, where it, it lists, you know, that dollar amount. That's the only amount. So therefore, the funds then, that if the governor attempts to use, of course, transfer these one million dollars cash, you know, to pay for the bond, then he would know, and everyone would know, that those funds then were not legally appropriated. And the only exception to the rule in which any of the monies can be used is when there is an emergency, and that's provided for also by law. And, um, and it's in title, chapter twenty-two, uh, section two-two-four-oh-two, where on the governor is authorized to utilize more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the general fund appropriations for emergencies, for emergency expenditures. So that is the only two opportunities in which the governor can use monies that has been appropriated, and one when, um, it's an emergency. So the governor then can, like I said, legally expend funds for the landfill, only if the legislature has appropriated the funds for that specifically, specific purpose. And as stated, uh, earlier, uh, when a colleague had asked about, uh, the, the expenditures of, of monies, and yes, I had read a, a portion of that in, in a judgment, uh, in New York, and it, it basically says, uh, the same thing that I've said earlier. The last thing that I, I like to use is, in, in our codes as well, in chapter twenty-two of five GCA, on section two-two-four-zero-one on illegal expenditures. And if I may, it says, "No officer or employee of the government of Guam, including the governor of Guam, shall, one, make or authorize any expenditure from or create or authorize any obligation under any appropriation or fund in excess of the amount available therein or for other than an authorized purpose. Two, commence, continue, or proceed with any operational activity, construction, improvement, contract, or obligation, without an appropriation or fund for the payment thereof, or after any such appropriation or fund is exhausted. And three, involve the government of Guam in any contract or other obligations for the payment of money for any purpose in advance of the appropriation made for such purpose." And it goes on, but then, on C, if I could, uh, uh, share with you, where it says, "No officer," then for C, on the five, six C, "Any officer, employee of the government of Guam who shall violate what I've just read to you, ink, is not just would, um, be subjected to appropriate disciplinary action, but including removal where warranted. And any officer, employee of the government of Guam who shall knowingly and willfully violate section, subsection A, hereof, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor." So, Mr. Chairman, I stand in support of the, um, the amendment to the amendment, the amended...
The amended amendment.
The amended, you're right, amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the primary amended, amendment as amended, Senator Espada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, we're really stuck between a rock and a hard place. I really appreciate this amendment. I really do. And I appreciate all the arguments that have been put forth in support of this argument. And again, I'll be right, right now, I'm not really sure which way I'm going to go. I mean, I, I'm more leaning towards supporting this, but, or however, right, I think our reliance upon this one case should not be so emphatic that this is our case. Because when we start talking about the holding in this particular case from the Second Circuit, the ultimate decision was based upon a certain set of facts upon which the law was applied, which ultimately led to the conclusion or the, or the holding of the court. The question we have to ask, if we rely on this case, are we similarly situated? Of course, you put two lawyers in a room, of course, we can argue all day long, right, depending on which side of the fence pays us, I suppose, right? However, that being said, the other distinction I think we need to make is, yes, the Second Circuit is a very strong court and a very well-respected court. However, their decisions are not binding upon us. They are persuasive, perhaps in any consideration, but they're not binding. The other aspect, as I mentioned earlier, is we have to strictly, I mean, at least not strictly, but we have to definitely look at the facts of the case within, within the Second Circuit case, and the facts confronting us. Now, you know, I can, we can go down and talk hours about the differences, but I'll take one real quick shot at it, and one that's very noticeable on the very front page is just the parties to the case. The parties to the case in the second district, uh, second, Second Circuit Court was the governor himself, not the government, but the governor, right, uh, against the, you know, the, whoever they were, the Association of Retarded Children, Inc., right? In our case, it's not the governor, it's the government of Guam. So the earlier issue that was made about having to do this so we can have standing in the federal court, perhaps is misplaced, because we already have standing, because we are already a party to this. Just by the very virtue that the court has instructed the speaker of this legislature to come into court, to be present at all the status hearings going forth, I believe makes us a party. And of course, that's subject to interpretation and argument also. Get two lawyers in a room, we could probably argue all day whether we're a party to this or not. Now, that's fine. Now, the holding of this case, as they've, as, as has been explained, is that the court cannot reach in or determine how the funds, in this case, within our treasury or within our general fund, can be expended based upon the decision of the court. However, if you look at the same case that was handed out on the Second Circuit Court, you had, you have two judges, you had, this was made comprised of three judges. Two judges, right, basically, uh, decided on, on the opinion. There was one judge who concurred with the ultimate decision of the, of the court, of majority, but disagreed with how they arrived there. And if you look at the concurrence, again, he explains why he, he, he concurs, but on a different basis. And one of the court cases that he does cite within his own concurrence is, uh, is a Supreme, U.S. Supreme Court case. Now, that's vastly different from us relying upon a second, uh, 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 Circuit Court case. This judge relied on a U.S. Supreme Court case, which, if I may, uh, in this case, what he says is, "There is little doubt that a federal court can issue a remedial order which is as practical matter, which as a practical matter, requires expenditures by the state." And it, then it cites the case. Now, in the parentheses, basically, they're explaining the holding of the court. It says, "Upholding order requiring state to bear, to bear expenses since federal court can, quote, 'and join state officials to conform their conduct to requirements of federal law, notwithstanding a direct and substantial impact on the state treasury." So again, we have to be very careful, and I'm just warning us not to all play lawyers in this and feel that we can make that ultimate decision based upon one case, because there are a lot of different, uh, there's a lot more research to be, to be made to try to, to, to really hold our position that this, that the holding in the Second Circuit case applies to us. So I'm just, I'm just cautioning everybody that we just can't go look at a case and say, "Well, this is what the court held there, so it applies to us, so we're good, and the, the, the court here has no, you know, has, has no recourse." That's not true. It's all based upon the set of facts that are confront us, which may differentiate us from the facts in this particular case, which then could probably lead to a different conclusion. And I just want, and again, I have to put that out, because, and, and a lot of people are playing lawyer in this, and they're free to try to interpret it. But then there's a lot more that goes on in terms of just how a case gets to a certain decision, and I just want to point that out. Another very obvious distinction between this case and our case is that in this Second Circuit case, the legislature, uh, basically approved funds to mitigate the constitutional violation that the court had found. In other words, they went on ahead and said, "The court found, okay, you guys did wrong, you violated these, these patients' rights, you need to fix it." The legislature did appropriate funds for that purpose. What they did not do in this case is they did not appropriate funds, or they, not they did not, but they struck out an appropriation of funds for the review board, which in this case would be the, the equivalent of our receiver. They said, "We're not going to pay for the receiver's bill," is in essence, right? But they did fund the project that they needed to correct. So again, there are vastly different sets of facts to be able to rely solely just on the holding, without trying to understand what our set of facts are, and whether this conclusion would be applicable to our set of circumstances. And again, I just want to make sure that everyone understands, in interpreting law and in doing the legal research behind this, you just can't make a call from one case and say, "That's that, and there we are," right? So I have to caution everybody on that. On the other side, though, I like it. We're going to have to make a stand sooner or later. And yes, by the Organic Act, we have the responsibility. We have the responsibility to control our budget, to make those appropriations where we feel are the most important, to go down this road. And I believe that the court will understand it too. But the U.S. Supreme Court holding, at least as cited by this, by the same case that was handed out to us, which argues the other side, does say that the federal court does have that latitude to be able to, to, to force us to conform to the requirements of federal law... which in this case is the Clean Water Act, is which we're violating. And the way to remediate that would be to close Ordot Dump and move forward in building a new landfill. So the court has that power. Now, what is she doing in terms of that $1 million payment? That $1 million payment is not a fine or a penalty. That $1 million is to actually act to remediate the violation of the Federal Clean Water Act and get us to the point where we can build a new landfill so we will close the Ordot Dump. Now, I'm just explaining this because, again, everybody's playing lawyer in here. And there's very, you know, there's some details that we need to fully, you know, that we need to understand. And I just wanted to point that out. But in this case, I would probably support this amendment. Because if anything, it will buy us time. That's all this buys us, is a little bit of time. Because if this comes in, and it is looked at by the court, and there may be a challenge, then that challenge has got to be resolved before we can move forward, I believe, in the expenditure of $1 million. And again, this is just one lawyer's opinion. You get one more lawyer in here, he could definitely, you know, have a different opinion than mine. But I believe it may buy us a little time. But we run the risk of other sanctions, of other penalties that may cost this project even more. So my recommendation, and I'm making my statement right here, is that if we go down this road, and it seems to be with the way we modified the bill on both sections, the bond borrowing section, as well as the private leaseback section, and then adding this component, right? We are making definitely a very strong stand. And we stand, of course, to put everything else at risk. I mean, we do risk losing this case and actually have to pay more than what is now before us. And so, with that being said, again, I guess it's time to go for a vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Espada. Senators, we've exhausted discussion on this particular primary amendment. By Vice Speaker Cruz, I will give him an opportunity to be able to close at an appropriate time. Just for the information of the body, we did receive, the chair did receive a copy of the proposed amended versions for the general bond obligation aspect of this, of Bill Number 51. A copy has been forwarded over to the legal counsel for review over the course of the weekend. I've asked her to also share a copy with all the senators so that come Monday morning, we can proceed as quickly as possible and understandably as possible in terms of reviewing both components. If there's any changes that are incorporated prior to Page 10, subsection 51808, then we will have to consider those initially so that in fact, we're all on the same page. But I will entertain other amendments to the proposal, taking into consideration the germaneest question. But when we return Monday morning, senators, I will allow Vice Speaker Cruz to close on his primary amendment. This, we will resume at 9:00 AM on Monday and consider the bond portion of the general obligation bond portion, inclusive of what the bond council have provided. Also, an invitation will be extended likewise, again, to the administration representatives. Hopefully, they'll be able to join us on Monday morning. And also, Senator Taidegui, I did not disregard your assertion that perhaps you may need legal guidance from the AGs. Hopefully, the time between now and Monday morning will provide you that opportunity. But I've also been asked to inform our colleagues because of the nature of this particular proposal and the need to complete discussion on it as quickly as possible, that public hearings that are scheduled for next week may have to be postponed. That was a information that I was asked to share with the body. So when we resume Monday morning at 9:00 AM, I will give the floor to Vice Speaker Cruz to conclude his comments on his amendment. And then we will proceed back to the bond portion and then entertain any closeout amendments or sections thereafter. Senator Calvo, you have a point of inquiry? Point of information?
The only thing I want to bring up, Mr. Chair, is, again, as much as I'd like to not to watch my boy's rugby game on Saturday, you know, this, I'm concerned about, again, there is time issues here in regards to the passage of this bill and allowing for the chief executive to review the bill and come, and of course, to then take action on that bill. And I know we're looking at March, where these, you know, potential fines or this, or monies used for the, to be used for the construction of new landfills are supposed to be utilized, being utilized. So I guess my concern is, waiting till Monday, do we feel that this body feel comfortable that we're going to be given enough adequate time to deliberate on these measures? And then, of course, after the deliberation, giving the governor ample time to act on it? And again, that's the concern I'd like to bring up, that maybe we could work on Saturday.
Okay, this is in regards to your concern. I think it's a very legitimate concern. I will request the assistance of the clerk's office if by any chance, what they've been able to complete, I understand they've been making appropriate amendments, incorporating the appropriate changes based on the actions of the body. Whatever their most recent action is in terms of updating it, that a copy be forwarded to the chief executive's office. Also, please be very mindful that aside from this afternoon, that representatives of the administration have been actively involved and impaneled to be here during the course of the discussions and some of the amendments that have been passed. The extension, once again, will be extended on Monday. Hopefully, we'll be able to get the representatives here so that they can follow us through. I understand your concern about the timelines. That's one of the reasons why it's been suggested that in fact, any public hearing scheduled for next week, please, there be appropriate consideration by the respective chairs to postpone that. So based on that, Vice Speaker Cruz, yes, you have your hands raised.
Mr. Chairman, while I appreciate the offer to delay the vote, unless anybody has any real vehement objection to or need to get additional advice on this, I would be willing to call for the question at this point. I mean, there really is, this is very, this is very, it really is a strong statement. And whether three or four days, two or three days isn't going to make a difference unless some people really need to sleep on it. And if people need to sleep on it, I'm game to wait until Monday. But I'm just saying, you know, probably you're not going to vote for it if you're not going to vote for it on Monday anyway. And I really don't need to get my blood pressure up on Monday again. I've been laying back here trying to get my blood pressure down so that I don't pass out. But I'm just, if they're not going to, if they, if people want the time to sleep on it, then let's go till Monday. If it's not going to change their mind anyway, let's vote on it, up or down. And I, as I said, I have no children, so I'm not going to be the one that has to, my children aren't going to have to bear any of this. But I'm just trying to say, let's do something. Let's try to figure out whether or not this legislature has a spine, or let's go. Well, all right, if two of them want to sleep on it, then I respect that.
Mr. Chair, you did offer that. And he did say that if anybody would like to sleep on it, I would like to not only sleep on it, but do a little more research so I have a comfort level when I vote. Like I said, I am, you know, I tend to have some similar sentiments to the mover of this amendment. But at the same time, I just want to make sure that when we do vote, at least when I cast my vote, that it's backed by some research that I normally do.
Okay, senators, thank you very much, Senator Espada and Vice Speaker Cruz. Just on that note, keep in mind that all the discussions have been concluded on this particular amendment, amended, which has been amended. Vice Speaker Cruz, you'll be given an opportunity on Monday morning to be able to provide your closing remarks. And then we will proceed back to Page 10. And senators, please, if you have an opportunity over the weekend, please review some of the proposed changes by bond council so that at least we'll all be on the same page. I asked our legal counsel to please forward an electronic copy to all senators. Hopefully, if not, by today, by tomorrow. No further discussions. We are recessed until 9:00 AM Monday morning. Thank you, senators.